So the time is six o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to City Hall who is here and folks online. Thanks for joining us. We'll start today's meeting with a meeting of the Liquor Control Board. I'd call that to order at 6:00 PM, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Bryn Oakley.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bryn. Alright, so we have our consent agenda, and I see Jenny approaching the table.
Yes, good evening. So presented, the only one right now that just waiting for is a conditional is Donwory. They had an inspection, and they're just waiting for an electrician to come, so the license won't be approved until we get the final inspection.
Awesome. Any concerns from you or other members of staff on any of these renewals or new permits?
No, the entertainment permits are both up full year. Pause. I don't know if we're unmuted. Paul's hands up? Okay.
Paul, is that why your hand was raised?
Can you hear me now?
Okay. Continue.
So the two event per entertainment permits are annual ones. We have an option of per event, or they can buy a full season, full year breadth of entertainment.
Any questions from council? No questions from council. Any questions from members of the public? Alright, seeing none, I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda for Halbeer, Specs, Standing Stones, Donwory, Korean, and Winuski Organic CBD.
It's removed. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful. That passes.
Thank you.
Time 6:02. I will adjourn the Liquor Control Board meeting and start the Winuski City Council meeting. Ahead of starting this meeting, I would just like to pass along council's deepest thoughts to the family of the second grader who was detained by ICE along with their mother while they were vacationing back to Ecuador, I believe. And also pass along my thanks, and all of our thanks to Winuski School staff who have been doing an incredible job in supporting the family and trying to assist them in this difficult time. Didn't know if councils wanted to add anything to that, but we just wanted to make that known. So agenda review. Any concerns with the agenda? Anything that needs to be moved?
Nope.
Alright, so public comment. So this item is reserved for comments and questions on topics that are not included on tonight's agenda. So if you have anything that you would like to speak about that is not on the agenda, this is now your time. Anybody in the audience? Yep. If you would please come up to the table and just state your name for the record.
Some of you have seen me before. Hi Bryn.
Hi.
And I would say I walked down from my house, and all but a little stretch was heavenly walking. Sidewalk, it was amazing. The day before Thanksgiving, I drove to Shaw's and I drove to Shaw's and just naturally drove down Weaver Street, and then I saw that the whole road was open. It was Thanksgiving morning I had to go to Shaw's, and it was heavenly. Is that, is that actually finished? I mean, it won't be torn up again next year?
Correct, yeah. So there'll be some finishing work, and I think it's part of the updates from the city manager. You might be able to go into some of that context, but at this point, the two-way directionality on Main Street is open.
And it will be, oh, something, it will be all next year? That's done?
So next year it will be more limited in duration and more limited in extent. So some, sometimes like maybe a block will have to be closed for a while while they do side work, but the full two-way, the full one-way detour will not be in place as far as we can foresee for next year.
Thank you. So I guess you had emailed me Bryn about my, my need for speed bumps, and we ended up, because we couldn't do that, I, I think it was 11 o'clock one night, and I heard someone scream by my house. I live on Richard Street, and I ordered all these signs from Amazon and put them up on every house but one on my street. And that seemed to quell it a little bit, and then maybe about, oh, three weeks or four weeks, I had it written down. Of course, I left it home. Three or four weeks later, the north end of the street, all the signs disappeared. It was a Saturday night, they were gone. So I ordered some more to fill it all out. And then after about a month, maybe it was about a month ago or five weeks ago, anyway, they all disappeared. And I didn't call the police because I figured they had other things to do. So my request, and I had asked a couple neighbors, but I don't think any of them showed up, is what are the chances of reducing the speed limit on streets that aren't Main Street, La Fountain Street, Mount Spada? Is that a possibility? Is that something that can happen? A friend of mine told me some, they tried it in another town, and it was shut down.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure on what statute says about changing speeds and what, if any, there is state involvement there, but I can only look and see if you know, but if not, we can look into that for sure.
Well, Main Street, is that, is that a county road or a state road?
Some of that road is part of a statewide highway, but the way that it is operated depends on where, where we are on the road.
Okay. Would I, should I start working on petitions, or what, what, what can I do to see if that's a possibility? Because it's, you know, someone drove, I was out of my driveway, maybe, I don't know, I had the signs up then, and a woman was driving by, and I did this, slow down, and they all hate me. And slow down, and, because it's a, it's a shortcut, you go up Main Street, and I guess they go, no, up La Fountain, and then go up the steep La Clara Hill, and then shoot down my street. And I did this, and she said, I'll let you know I'm going 25. And then I thought, 25 is really too fast then, because I thought she was going pretty fast. I mean, there's no reason. How do you get to 25 when you're halfway up the street if the stop sign, you know, it's a short, it's maybe, what, 15 houses on the street? So, but that's just my question, if that's a possibility. And is there anything I can do?
So you, you've made your request. We'll commit to answering you by Friday on what can be done. And maybe, yeah, we'll have to fight, figure out what can be done first, and then go from there.
That would be great, because there's no, the speed bump thing is, that's a moot point now, right? Because there was a monitor and it didn't seem to qualify?
There was a traffic calming assessment that was done, and the findings were such that there were incidences of increased speed and excessive speed, but that it was during the duration of that study, it wasn't perceived to be persistent. So that, you know, the outliers kind of omitted the need, the excessive speeding outliers kind of omitted the need for traffic calming measures under that particular study.
I think, I think it said something like it was between, mostly between the hours of three and seven, or something like that. I can't remember.
Yeah, I'd have, I'd have to review the study again to get the details.
There's, there's no chance that a person could pay for speed bumps to be put in and have the city put them in there? That can't happen, can it?
That seems a wash and issues, so I don't.
It's a what?
That would be, that would come with some issues, so it's not something that I would recommend.
What would the issues be?
Well, once it's in, who owns it, and if something happens to it, then what?
I would, I would deed it to the city.
That's also an issue, because then we would be responsible for putting it back, that's right.
So.
But in terms of, and I, I, I don't know if this was already told to you, so if it was, I apologize. But what it could, it sounds like an enforcement issue. Usually when there's not, usually when a permanent piece of infrastructure is not justified by a speed study, then we refer it as an enforcement issue, or you referred to the police department?
Uh, I think there was, there was a little bit of email back and forth with the police chief, I guess, and you know, I think we were told to, to see someone speeding, put down the license plate. And there's some people, a couple cars that I noticed that are in the new building where the tattoo parlor is, drove fast down the street, and I think it was some kind of Volkswagen. And, and then there are a couple cars that, there's a, it's an old Honda Civic, it's a Sydneyan, I think, or an Accord, and they don't have a muffler, so I kind of put that down to, they haven't come up with money to pay for the muffler, so who am I to give them a hard time? But, you know, I did this to someone that was, I don't, it was, might have been that car or another car. And of course, then they stepped on the gas and revved it up as they went by me, so. You know, and I'm curious to see who would steal all those signs. I don't, you know, someone, one of my neighbors said they thought it was probably kids the first time, because it was maybe one end of the street, and then a car came by and it took off. But the whole street was kind of a surprise and kind of a slap in the face. I mean, it's, that, you know, we're not, we're not asking that much.
Yeah.
And I know that the corner of Franklin and La Fountain, I know the woman that lives at the corner, Kelsey, and they have a couple signs up. And I texted her if she wanted to come, but she was putting her kids to bed. I don't know if her husband works at night or not, but, yeah, so. So someone will get back to me?
Yes, Carol, do you know if those signs were in a right, in the right of way, or if they were in people's yards proper? Like on the inside of the sidewalk?
None of them were in the road.
Uh, the green spa, is there a sidewalk there?
There's lawn sidewalk, green space, I guess.
Were they on the roadside of the sidewalk, or on the lawn?
They're on the roadside, is that?
That's the city right of way then, so it's possible that we remove them. If we did, then we still have them, but people could put them in the, in the, people can put them in their own yards.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
If we have them, they would be next to this window on the inside here, the hallway.
You mean, they could be right out here?
They could be, if we took them. I don't know that we did.
If only I'd known.
Well, it, it's a big maybe, because those signs are still placed out on some homes on Franklin Street, too, La Fountain Street, right?
On the corner, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be, it, it's a, it's a possibility, but there's a way to check for it, but it's not an assurance that that's, that they got picked up by city staff.
Right.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Is there any public comment online? Alright, seeing none, we'll move over to the consent agenda. So on the consent agenda, we have the Liquor Control Board meeting, minutes of November 3rd, and City Council meetings, meeting minutes of November 3rd. Payable warrant from October 26th to November 8th, and from November 9th to November 22nd. Counts payable warrants from November 2025, and grant for business support and marketing campaign through city construction projects. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's removed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining. I wasn't there. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Alright, so on to council reports. Al, would you like to start?
Um, the only report that I have is that we have a Safe and Healthy Connected People meeting on Tuesday, December 9th, at 5:30 PM.
Wonderful, thank you. I'll see.
Uh, the Housing Commission met on Tuesday, November 25th, and while we had a forum, only three people were able to attend the meeting, so the commission voted to postpone the agenda items until next month's meeting, so more people could be present. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, December 16th, to discuss changes to the core program.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
The Infrastructure Commission had a joint meeting with the Finance Commission on November 20th. It was a really great meeting, well-attended. We had a handful of members, community members from the public come and provide comments and questions. There were no decisions or votes taken by the commissioners during that meeting. There was some interest in exploring renovations for City Hall that would go beyond just the police department, seeing if there were, was some project efficiencies in combining some upstairs improvements to chambers and to some of the office spaces in the budget, rather than piecemealing them out separately. So that was in response to public comment that we received here during one of our council meetings, and then was given again during the Infrastructure Commission meeting. There was also interest in providing funding allocation for traffic calming measures, now that we've done three closing, well, there's two, two or three reports, and then one pending report with findings for one of the studies indicated that traffic calming measures were, were valid. And, you know, advocating that there hasn't been any funding allocated for traffic calming measures since the plan was adopted in 2022, so hoping that there is some carve-out for implementing those as indicated by the traffic calming studies and the traffic calming manual. That was, that was that for that meeting, and we anticipate convening again on December 18th. Agenda details will be forthcoming.
Perfect, thank you. Councilor Hearn?
So the Inclusion and Belonging Commission meets this month, that would be December 17th at 6:00 PM. Be over Zoom as well as in the council, or at City Hall. I also want to share kind of a more personal update, that I will not be running for reelection this March. I'll still be around, but need to take a step back for a time due to some health and career matters. I appreciate everyone I've worked with and gotten to know for the past few years, and I look forward to continuing that work in a different capacity in the future.
Before I give my update, Councilor Hearn, I just want to thank you for your time on council. I've spoken about it many times at this table. Councilor Hearn and I came on and started at the exact same time. We campaigned in the cold together in what was actually, at least in recent memory, Winuski's most contested primary. And when they told me the news earlier, I had a hard time not crying, but just thank you so much for everything you've brought to this table and the community. And I will try not to press you too much to get you back involved sooner than later, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, a few weeks, you see, I can't even, mouth flustered now. Planning Commission met last, two weeks ago, and they just had further discussion on the unified land use and development that I told you all about the last time they had met. So this time they were talking about gentle infill, converting existing spaces into dwellings. So that's like converting garages or attics into apartments or just additional living space. The signage that is allowed in public districts, and then aligning their very large documents to make sure that affordable housing correlated with priority housing in all of the appropriate places. I also attended, you're all commissioned, the Development Review Board at their last meeting, where there was ample discussion from the public around the Armory Project. So the DRB will be hosting another public hearing, actually at the site of the Armory. I know that they are working on more details when that is going to occur and at what time. Planning Commission meets next, December 11th, and the Finance Commission will meet next on December 9th. Also, a reminder, this Thursday, starting at 5:00 PM in the Circle, is the Holiday Pop-Up Shop, so it's a fantastic time to get gifts for others for the holiday season, just get gifts for yourself. There's going to be lots of great vendors at different establishments all along the Circle, so you definitely don't want to miss that. That's 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Alright, so, city updates.
One minute. The fiscal year 2027 budget process begins tonight with the overall budget and general government presentation. Community members are encouraged to get involved in the process. The proposed fiscal year 2027 budget and all budget meeting information is provided at winuskivt.gov/fy27. Budget meetings occur during City Council meetings on Monday nights or Tuesdays when there are holidays, and will take us through the end of January. We'll have presentations for each city department before the City Council takes the final budget vote on January 26th, at least that's what it's scheduled for. Then in February, we'll host a community event at the Winuski School District. Details to come. And council will no doubt host some other informational opportunities around town. All of that will then lead up to the Town Meeting Day election on March 3rd, 2026, where community members will vote on the budget and other items, such as city councillors, bond votes, and more. Speaking of public participation, please check out our new Public Meetings page. At the beginning of every month, community members can look ahead to all of our City Council, Board, Commission, and Committee meetings by visiting winuskivt.gov/meetings. A once-a-month news update will go out announcing that month's meetings, and where possible, we'll continue to share meeting information on our other communications channels. We hope this provides a new central location to find out about public meetings. Residents are always encouraged to participate, ask questions, and provide feedback during public meetings. It's that time of year, winter parking bans begin today. As a reminder, there is no overnight street parking from 2:30 AM to 6:00 AM in downtown Winuski from December 1st through March 31st. For everywhere else in Winuski, overnight winter parking bans are made during winter storms and for snow removal, where street parking is not allowed, from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. To sign up for our winter parking ban alerts, text the word WINUSKI to 888-777, or register at nixle.com. That's N-I-X-L-E dot com. For full details, please visit winuskivt.gov/parking. Help save a life by joining us for the Blood Drive at the Winuski Senior Center at 123 Ballerow Street on Thursday, December 4th, 2025, from 12 to 4:15 PM. You can schedule online at redcrossblood.org/give, or by calling 1-800-BRED-CROSS. Visit the news update section at winuskivt.gov for current promotional details. And finally, the Operation Fire Cuffs Toy Drive has begun again. This cherished local tradition unites neighboring public safety agencies to bring toys and joy to children at the Galasano Children's Hospital at UVM Health. Donations can be provided at the Winuski Fire and Police Departments. For donation specifics, visit the news update section at winuskivt.gov. And if you're like me and don't know exactly what to buy, there's a handy-dandy gift list on that page.
Fantastic, thank you. We will move into our regular items. A review of general fund reserves. Elaine?
Yes, so we are going to start actually with Angela giving an overview of the policy and all of the types of reserves that the funds have, and then I'll review some of the specifics on potential future assignments. Thank you, Angela.
Sure, so in 2021, City Council adopted a fund balance reserve policy that dictates how we can use any reserve balances that we have. We have a policy that states that we should maintain about 30 to 45 days cash on hand for coverage of operating expenses, and that represents the amount of money that is generally spent between the start of the fiscal year and the receipt of the first tax installment, from July 1st to August 15th. After that, unassigned reserve for the 30 to 45 days cash on hand, anything in excess is either assigned to a specific project or is considered an unassigned balance. The policy dictates that unassigned balances should only be used for one-time or temporary expenses to prevent creating a budgetary hole that needs to be filled in the future, creating a future obligation on a budget that's not yet been presented. On the reserve spreadsheet that you received in the packet, you will see that there's a lot of numbers. The first column of numbers is the reserve balances. That represents the actual balances that we had on the books as of June 30, 2025. The second column represents the 30-day cash on hand for our budgetary funds, and that is the General Fund and the three Enterprise Funds. The third column is any funds that are restricted or assigned for use. That is something that has either been part of a budgetary process or a formal assignment by council. We do have a little bit of unassigned capital money sitting in the Capital Fund. It is essentially assigned for capital costs, but doesn't have a specific project in mind. And then there is unassigned operating for Enterprise Funds. You will notice that there is a negative number right there in the Parking Fund. We are keeping an eye on that. It is not unexpected based on the projections that we had done very early in the Abnaki Garage progress. We do not yet have full operations of the Abnaki Garage, so cannot generate the extra revenues to offset some of those expenses. And then we end in that second bolded column with the unassigned operating governmental funds. That represents the balances that council is able to allocate towards those one-time or fixed expenses.
Thank you, Angela. Any questions overall for Angela, who I neglected to introduce as our finance director?
Angela, just for the purposes of heading into budget season, and also to new councillors, can you give a brief explanation of what capital projects would be?
So we also have a capital asset policy that dictates that capital projects are those that cost more than $5,000 and have a useful life of five years or more.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you bringing this document forward to us. It obviously exists, but I think sometimes we forget exactly where it exists as we're entering into budget season, and there are so many asks that we have our own desires, things we're hearing from the public, different asks that come up during, during meetings, that this is, that there is some money here for those sort of one-time funds. Angela, are there any best practices in terms of, you know, there's this X amount of money, but I'm guessing it's probably safe to leave some of that money in there, to not use all of it?
Um, that would be that 45 days cash on hand, that's best practices, although with the amount of emergency use that we've seen in the state, there, there are some sort of legislations that have been proposed to allow people to carry fund balances to be able to pay for unexpected expenses. There is not a best practice for how much you should have in reserves for those types of emergency purchases, but we definitely have in excess of that number, I would believe.
So if I could, before we move on, I'll review the potential future assignments, because this is the list that should matter to you as you're looking at potential things you would consider in a budget. Hopefully, we actually haven't proposed anything in the budget that we could use one time for. And although, yes, there might be some things that we should not be considering for one time that should be in the budget, which I have not, so I'll describe that a bit in the next presentation. So if you look further down on the spreadsheet, and Paul, if you could put it on screen while I'm talking, thank you. So below, there's a row that says Potential Future Assignments. We've got Main Street Utility Undergrounding. This is something that's known, it's expected. I think we have an MOU. It's part of the Main Street project, as it says, so we're, that will be coming. Probably in this fiscal year. Champlain Pedestrian Bridge, so there is a dispute with owner of the Champlain Mill Building who is responsible for maintaining that footbridge that goes from, almost from Miski Falls Way over to the building. And we are having a mediation session this month, so I'm anticipating that something may be required. Hopefully not, but that's why it's question marks in there. I have no idea how much that would be if it was. Lot 9 Brownfields, I'm using this as a placeholder, honestly. There are known Brownfields issues in this lot, which is between the Champlain Mill Bridge building and the main Burlington-Winuski Bridge, which is privately owned, but that lot is, has a development agreement attached to it, and the development agreement is between the lot owner and the city. So way back in the day, there was some expectation perhaps that the city might participate in, in a development there, and maybe through Brownfields, but we, there's, that is also a subject of litigation, so I have no idea what's going to happen there. This, for me, is just a placeholder that. This, for me, is just a placeholder that we might expect to summon expense related to that lot sometime. It may or may not have to do with Brownfields. A staffing model analysis, this is something we've been debating for some time. How do we approach that? It's also a placeholder piece where we have, we have a very lean staff here. So, and a low-income community. So it takes a lot for the leadership team or me to decide that we want to propose a new staff position to council, because staffing is, are more expensive, because they do good work. It's one of our more, bigger line items. So short of that, how can we make life a little easier for our very committed but overworked staff? And presumably, there are some efficiencies in there. Probably, the folks that work here know what those could be. There might be other things that we don't know, that we haven't thought about. And the idea of a staffing model analysis is really to figure out those process improvements. And we've given this a go a couple of times and haven't really come at like a perfect solution. We just had another call today about another idea. So again, this is a placeholder in case one day we come up with something that's worth spending some money on. In the meantime, those processes have resulted in a recommendation for a human resources and information system, which has made it into the budget proposal that I'm going to present to you in a minute here. WWTF, that stands for Waste Water Treatment Facility. Oh dear, that's really not visible up there, is it? Paul, I'm sorry, if you could zoom in, I don't know if you can, to just the sections where there's green next to it. Waste Water Treatment Facility Floodproofing. So during the July 2023 floods that hit our area harder in central Vermont, the only city-owned property in the city that was really in danger of a lot of expensive damage was the Waste Powder Treatment Plant. Because it's more efficient to have waste water treatment plants at low elevation, they also make them more vulnerable to flooding. There was some work done by the city some time ago there that has increased its resilience, just needs a bit more around the last, it's called a contact tank near, near the river. So the staff have figured out this ingenious and low-cost method to keep it from getting washed out or get, having the water come in contact into river water, which entails sand and tarp, which is very labor-intensive to put down, and then even more to clean up. So obviously, we would prefer a fixed solution. We've been waiting on grant money that has not materialized, and now we're waiting on enough time to actually put something together to, 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 a project scope together to pay for. So anticipating that that would be coming out. That might not have to come out of the general fund, but probably by rights, it could come out of the wastewater fund. However, that fund is a little, is a bit lean. So we could also justify taking it out of the general fund. Garage lighting, this has been requested. We are, the lighting that's in there is not end-of-useful-life, but is considered by some users to be too dim. And so it could be a future request for us to, if, once we've had time to consider what it could do for safety, if it's advisable, if there's a cost-effective way to do that, even though they're not at end-of-life yet, then that could be something that we would propose. And then finally, dispatch equipment, that it's aging, they're making due, they're able to still get replacement parts at the moment, but at some point, it is, it's old enough that we might have to replace bigger chunks of that, which is quite expensive. So we're starting off the end of fiscal year 2025 with a balance of $4,136,350 in some sense, which is reassuringly healthy. We don't need all of that for, that's after the 45-day reserve. So if all of these things come true at these estimated amounts, and they are only estimates, we would still have 2.7, excess of $2.7 million left. So we're in a healthy spot. That, of course, that doesn't take into account the Champlain Pedestrian Bridge potential expense there. But we should know more, I'm anticipating we'll know more this month, so in time for any budget decisions that you might make in March, or I'm sorry, in January.
Thank you for going over that. One thing I'm realizing that had been on here, but isn't anymore, and I wonder maybe if it's in a budget presentation, is the, I forget the acronym, the RFIB lights for the top of the circle.
Yeah, so that's something that we could, what do we, how that, Brenna and I just talked about this and Angela, we put it in, yeah, so it's a potential reserve request that could be added back in. I hadn't heard anything lately, so that's why it's not here. Also, given how long it took us to replace the one that we do have, I didn't know that it was, it made much sense to include it here. But of course, it's something that we're happy to track if that's what council decides.
Thank you. Councillors.
No, looking forward to that spreadsheet where we can see the list of potential future assignments, and then some of the other ones that you mentioned that are not captured here. Yeah, there's, there's high demand and limited funds.
Correct, exactly.
It's good to have this walkthrough before we go into the budget.
Yeah.
Any comments from the public? Anyone online? All right, seeing none. This was just our discussion, so we will move on to item B, the fiscal year 2027 budget presentation and general government review.
Paul, did you, would you mind, oh no. Sorry, I didn't help you cue this up first. Can I share my screen? And I realized I should have tested this.
It's okay, you can absolutely share your screen. Should be good to go there.
While I'm doing that, could you find the presentation? Angela can tell you where it is, just in case I'm not able to do it the way I need to.
It's ready to go on my desktop.
It's always the presenter view that I'm not sure I can make work. Yeah, that. Yeah, if you could share it, sorry. Thank you. Okay, so tonight, I am presenting the fiscal year 2026, 2027 proposed budget. I'll provide an overview of all the funds, and, oh, darn it. This isn't going to have all my useful animations, oh well. Detail about the general government departments. Note that I will be presenting a budget that's in line with council's direction from your October 6th meeting, meeting this earlier this year, which was for a strategic investment budget, meaning not just level services. Thank you to council members who have already started asking your questions. Please feel free to ask questions tonight as we go. But also, we might not answer them all today, so we can give you a good answer. For detailed questions about public works, capital improvement, police, fire, code enforcement, and community services, I might have those department heads answer themselves in their presentations that will follow in subsequent weeks. And you can also email your questions to budget@winuskiVT.gov. That will give more or less a chance to see them, and I'm not the bottleneck for questions as we go through the weeks. And to warn you, my presentation takes about 45 minutes to deliver without questions. So I'll give some opportunities for breaks in the middle, but if you're already feeling it, before I say that, feel free to let Thomas know you need a break. Next, please, Paul. So the agenda for my presentation in a bit more detail, I'll remind everyone about the strategic vision context for the city and this budget, review the budget process, review my proposed general fund budgets, review all the funds together, and review what's next in the budget process. Also, review in more detail the budgets that I manage directly. Those are general administration, community development, and parking. And finally, I'll share some challenges on the horizon that could impact the city's financial future. Note the colors on the left will function as a progress bar, so you know where we are in the agenda. Next, please. Again, you can see on the left here that we're on the first agenda item, and so the first color is bigger. That's how you know where we are in the agenda. This strategic vision slide is to remind viewers that everything your city team does is guided by the strategic vision set by the community in 2015. That's documented in what we're currently calling the master plan. These vision areas, municipal infrastructure, housing, economic vitality, and safe, healthy, connected people continue to be relevant today, even though it was first formed in 2015. And even as we're starting work, started work on updating the master plan, actually, going forward, we'll be calling that update a comprehensive plan, catching up with some outdated language there. Next, please. Reminder on the budget process. In September, council approved the budget timeline. In October, council provided direction on your priorities. And bold is where we are tonight. In the next three council meetings, you'll hear from our bigger operational areas, public works and capital, community services, and then, I'm sorry. That's the wrong order. Public safety will go first, then public works and capital improvement, and then community services. You'll then have at least two opportunities in your regular meeting schedule to have an overall discussion about what budget you will approve to send to voters. Those nights will be January 20th and January 26th. So the budget@winuskiVT.gov email can also be used by members of the public. By state law, we need to warrant the budget vote 30 to 40 days in advance of the vote, which will be held on Town Meeting Day, which is March 3rd. So staff will need to have published notices of what's on the ballot, which is known as the warning, between January 22nd and February 1st. Your scheduled meetings around this time are January 20th, 26th, and February 2nd. So your schedule has you approving the budget and setting the warning during your January 26th meeting. If you need more time to, before you can set the budget that's going to go to voters, you do have the option to schedule another meeting, as long as the budget and warning are set in enough time for staff to have the warning published before February 1st. There's a lot to navigate there for calendar math, so if you can stick to 2026, please do. If not, we will, Jenny and I will take care of you in terms of what dates would work. Do also keep in mind that by state statute, early ballots can be available as early as 30 days before Town Meeting Day. So setting the budget closer to 30 days before the vote will likely reduce the amount of time early voting is available, because we do need to get the final ballot printed. So again, a lot of considerations there. In February, council generally presents on the budget you approved. Usually, as I mentioned earlier, during announcements, council and the Winuski School Board, just, School Board, Winuski School District Board of Trustees present their two budgets at the sum of the same events. By city charter, there's a last presentation the day before the vote, so that's March 2nd this time. That's one of the ones held jointly with the school district and is at the school. And finally, of course, Town Meeting Day is March 3rd, when people can vote in person by ballot for the school and city budgets, local offices, and other local matters, including three bond votes. More on that later today, and of course, more, given that they are related to capital, the Public Works Director, John Rager, will go over those during his presentation on January 5th. Next, please. So a reminder that during your October 6th, 2025th meeting, council directed staff to develop a strategic investment budget that updates costs for existing services and allocates additional resources to priority areas recommended by staff. Council also asked to see the budget needs that staff see for coming years. Next, please. So before I launch too deeply into the budget, some context for who the budget pays for, and why that's important, is because we're the ones providing the services for the most part. As a local government, we do provide services to the general public, which I often think of as like they're too expensive for people to get on their own, or we have decided as a community that it's fundamentally important that everyone has access to certain types of services. There's also some behind-the-scenes costs needed to administer all of those services. And again, for the most part, it takes people to deliver what we do. This is an organizational chart showing how these people are organized by department or office. At the top, everyone in the organization is accountable to Winuski residents and voters. The community's primary role is to set the vision. Council's role is to interpret that vision and adopt plans, strategies, and policies to achieve that vision. The black box at the right there is for advisory bodies. These bodies, most of them are created by council, and members are all appointed by city council to formally advise council on plans, strategy, and policies. There's a little blue blocks on the, above that black box that says Development Review Board. They're the quasi-judicial body that decides, makes sure that projects that come before them are in compliance with zoning regulations set by council as recommended by the Planning Commission. At the bottom is the green box showing municipal service areas. Starting with the second one down, assessing the way we raise money to pay for the services we provide, the public is mostly through property taxes. That's most of the revenue we get in the city is through property taxes. The tax bill for a property is based on the value of that property, and it's the professional contracted assessor that the city hires who determines the value of each property. And the next one down is community services. They support the vitality of our community, providing green spaces, safe spaces, learning spaces, and programs. Fire and code enforcement is the next one. They provide, protect our safety and health related to buildings and road hazards. Next is planning and housing. They support a built environment that our community needs and wants. Police and dispatch support the safety of our community members. This department also enforces city parking regulations, which contrary to some belief, is actually for a purpose. It's about safety in most of the, most of Winuski and in the downtown, it supports our economic vitality by ensuring that parking space is turnover for businesses that that's relevant for in our downtown. It also includes community outreach, which provides social worker responders when appropriate or more appropriate. That's, meaning that also comes out of the police budget. Public Works manages our streets, sidewalks, water, and wastewater services. And then finally, back at the top of the green box administration, that includes all of the supportive functions like finance, human resources, and communications, and as well as the city clerk's office, which manages records and elections. In between city council and the operational box at the bottom is me, the city manager. The city manager supports city council and your overall efforts to guide the city, and the position provides leadership, coordination, and support to all city departments. And as city manager, I am accountable to city council and the public for all activities for all staff. Any questions about the org chart? Okay, next, please. Because most of Winuski's government services are provided by people, most of the budget is for salaries in blue on the right there, and benefits in light blue at the bottom. This compensation makes up 61% of the budget, so almost two-thirds of it. Note that most of our employees are covered by multi-year union contracts, which set wage increases and dictate benefits. For those employees not covered by union contracts, it's better for retention to have wage increases and benefits that are similar to those in union contracts. And that's how we, we've been budgeting for some time. All right, so that was context. Next, please. I'll, now I'll review the council-directed budget for the general fund. The general fund pays for general administration, fire and code enforcement, police, public works and administration, and staff, community services, and some capital costs related to the buildings for those people and services. And the general fund is the one that affects the tax rate. Because this is most of my presentation, it has its own little progress bar underneath the third colored block. So again, you know where we are. Next, please. The budget staff developed according to council direction of strategic investment above level services is actually slightly lower than this. It would result in a tax rate increase projected to be 6.47%. This is different from the 6.51% number that was in the packet. I'll explain why in the next slide. And keep in mind that whenever I say a projected tax rate increase, it's based on our estimate of what the April 1st, 2026 grand list will be. If the grand list is higher than our estimate today, the tax rate increase will be lower. If the grand list is higher than our estimate today, then the tax rate increase would be higher. Next, please. So first, I'll review the challenges and assumptions affecting our budget. Recall the proportion of the budget that is wages and benefits. So we projected a 3.1% cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 2027 in all the numbers that are shown in this presentation. The police union has an additional 1% through their contract. So our two union contracts are based on the October to October consumer price index change, which is, on this past Wednesday, we learned was actually 3.0%. So that's why. So that's why it's, the tax, projected tax rate increase is slightly lower than that is in this packet. We do use the same figure for non-union employees, not higher for fairness and not lower, so it's not to create pay compression issues between leadership and frontline workers. And we will, of course, update the budget that council votes on to reflect the 3.0% cost of living increase. All the other numbers in this presentation is based on the older cost of living increase, because it does take some time to update the wages in every department, so they're all a little bit off. The next bullet down here is health insurance. So the increase for calendar year 2026 will be 2.5%. That's a known number. For the second half of fiscal year 2027, meaning January 2027 to June 2027, we project a 13% cost rate increase based on past averages. The last bullet there is grand list. The grand list is the total value of taxable property in the city. We're estimating conservative growth based on recent history and what we're aware of is in the development pipeline. The, a 0.8% net change to the grand list translates to about $69,163 in new property tax, I'm sorry, yeah, property tax revenue for the general fund. It's not nothing, but it's not much compared to a $1 million budget. Grand list growth that will determine the actual tax rate base, that, I'm sorry, tax base for the city will not be calculated until April 1st, 2026, and so could vary from projections, as it did this past year. Any questions about this? All right, next, please. This bar graph summarizes what's driving the 6.47% tax rate change. Salaries at far left is in darker blue. Usually benefits is part of this graph. It's nice to see that it's not this year. That's because MVP, which is what the city is on in terms of an insurance carrier, their increase was pretty small. To the right of that, in lighter blue, is also the salary, but it's due to a new position that I'll discuss more in a bit during the strategic investment section of the my presentation. Just to the right of that, in light green, is contract or other cost increases resulting from inflation. This share is a lot larger than it has been in recent years. It includes general and specialty supplies, utilities, building maintenance, professional services, vehicle and equipment maintenance. And you can ask more questions about these, like as we go through the different departments, I will go in a little bit more detail on the budgets that I manage and what those mean here. This 29% also includes increases for downtown Winuski and Green Mountain Transit compared to the, this current fiscal year budget. At far right and darker green is the increase in contribution to the capital plan. Historically, council capped the contribution of the capital plan to 5%, resulting, this unfortunately resulted in underinvestment in streets, sidewalks, and our equipment and vehicle fleet. Fortunately, starting two budgets ago, meaning fiscal year 2025, council and voters approved bigger contributions to reduce this backlog in investment in municipal infrastructure. The amount I recommend for the budget changes depending on what the staff can actually implement in a given year. So in FY '25 was a big jump, not so much last year. This year is, actually don't remember how it compares to last year. But the 5% share of the tax rate increase in this general fund, in this tax, from the general fund, reflects a 6.2% increase to the capital fund over fiscal year 2026. So it's still higher than the old 5% cap, but not by much, again, because of our capacity. Any questions on this before we move on?
I was wondering if you could quickly clarify. Sorry, my brain is not, just not following. On the previous page, the health insurance, you listed a health insurance increase for both this, starting January 2026, but then it is also not part of this?
Yeah, the overall contribution is not that, is not big enough to show here.
Okay. Love that. Okay.
Yes, me too. Exactly. Could be worse.
Quick clarifying question. The budget book on page two or of the document, page four of the PDF, has a 6% of their expenses in the graph?
Oh, that's right.
And I'm curious why that is differing here?
Yeah, that's right. The, so thanks for bringing that up. The one in the budget book is more, is accurate. This one is missing that 6%.
Okay.
Yeah. I forgot to update that. Thank you. This doesn't actually add up to 100. It's missing 6%, which is miscellaneous. Anything else?
No.
All right, next, please. So what is in my general fund budget? At last, here we are. First, I'm going to explain those services that we've kept level. That'll include discussion of what's status quo, where we've, where the services are level but unusual circumstances, and then where there's reductions or level funding. And then finally, I'll talk about strategic investments as council requested. Next, please. So what's in my, more detail on what's in, I'll start with increases that are for level services. These are increases to contracted services, including building maintenance, natural gas for heating, electricity for streetlights, and city-owned buildings, as well as inflation costs such as for pool chemicals, food for senior center programs, and the county tax. It also includes an increase to Green Mountain Transit assessments. If you have questions about that, we actually have the general manager here to talk about a different matter, but of course is happy to talk about other matters related to next year as well. Increase to downtown Winuski over the fiscal year 2025 budget, although not new members of council will remember that on the April 7th, 2025 meeting, you discussed an increase for the, for staffing there. So this acts on the promise council may then to at least explore it during budget. Increase allocation to the city's Community and Economic Development Fund. So that increase is proposed at, oh, I'm sorry, I should have given the numbers. So for GMT, it's $13,746. For downtown Winuski, it's just over $55,000. For Community and Economic Development Fund, it's $10,000. It has been annually $200,000 for many years. I'm hoping we can do more now that we have an Economic Mobility Opportu, and Opportunities Special Assistant, who just started today. Then we've got the continued incremental increase to town meeting TV and Winuski Valley Parks District. Honestly, the amounts are very small there. They're just $1,000 each. Normally, I wouldn't mention it at this level, but it is, I'm mentioning it because we are still behind the other communities that pay into these services, and I want to highlight that I'm, by including them here, that I'm not actually proposing that we catch up this year. Any questions on this slide before we go on? All right, next, please. Continuing the review of what's in, so this slide is about what's increased over fiscal year 2026 for level services, but with unusual circumstances outside of the status quo. Last slide was kind of status quo stuff. This is not status quo. First item here, decrease for Howard Center Community Outreach Contract over the budgeted amount. The staff, the community outreach staff is shown in that picture at the top left. The, again, this service provides social workers to participating police departments to respond to calls when appropriate. They may respond with a police officer or on their own, depending on the nature of the call. The amount included for their, in their budget is in the mid-range of their projections for fiscal year 2027 at $50,000. This year, they're charging us about $43,500, although we budgeted for $60,000 based on the information we had at the time. So this is technically, it's level services, but it's actually less money, but it's, it's the same service.
And that is a reflection of some changes in operations that they've made? Is that right?
So the $60,000 reflected, we, reflected an increase that they thought they would need due to a loss of a state grant. The community, municipalities banded together to advocate with the legislature to restore that grant from Department of Mental Health, and actually, our very own Representative Daisy Perbeco was instrumental in getting any of funding restored in that passed in the legislature. So when they restored that, they were able to decrease our, decrease our contributions accordingly, but not as much as that, that you would think based on the amount of that grant, because their benefits costs were a lot higher than they were expecting.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure thing. The second bullet there, my proposed budget makes progress on the fire response challenge, which you'll hear more about in a couple of weeks here, in essentially two ways. One is to, next week, you'll hear about it next week. One is to bump up an existing position. The cost for this is covered by eliminating vacant positions in the part-time roster. This move is generally not something that you want to do, but is warranted, given that in three years, we've only netted one part-time firefighter depart, despite many recruitments, because we also had departures. The other strategy to try to make progress on the fire response challenge is to create an additional position, but that's more of a new investment, so I'll review that in a later slide. The third bullet here, as council knows, this community voted in 2018 to join the Chittenden County Public Safety Authority, tasked with providing regional emergency dispatch services that would replace our local dispatch teams. This effort came closer than ever in 2022, but then a series of circumstances in 2023 basically scuttled it. Currently, there is essentially no momentum to think that regional dispatch is arriving anytime soon. We could, in theory, contract with another existing dispatch department, but the city of Winuski would have no governance over that department the way we would have under CCPSA. So for the time being, we've recommended, we beef up our own dispatch department to address many of the issues that regional dispatch should have. This beefing up would come at a cost that is about $30,000 more, $30,000 more than I'm currently showing in the budget. Full-time person, you can expect would actually be more than that, and it isn't, because we already have been carrying about $79,000 for an admin position that we would have needed if we had been dispatched by CCPSA. We can still add this position in fiscal year 2027 by using fund balance when we're ready to hire, but if, hopefully you heard Angela say, that's actually not a good idea per our policy. However, it's something that I chose to do, because otherwise, the projected tax rate would be a lot higher. So as with the community outreach item, if you have questions about regional dispatch-related budget, you can email them to budget@winuskiVT.gov, so that we can review them in advance of the public safety presentations next week. And finally here, I've included just over $6,000, so that we can pay our entry-level full-time, non-union staff a livable wage. I'll turn the presentation now over to HR Director Jesse Akri to review the information for that. Jesse is online. Paul, if you could, oh, you don't have to do anything, he's already here.
Paul, do you want to go to the next slide? So I want to explain why grade two jobs may need higher pay. These workers help the public every day, and their jobs can be very stressful. Their pay is low right now, and this makes it very hard to retain staff. My goal here is to give clear information, so the council can decide what is best. And when everyone's finished reading this slide, we can move on to the next one. So we looked at overall fairness with this grade, and many people in these jobs are women or non-binary and more people of color. It's 35.2% are BIPOC, and 82.3% are women or non-binary. They make up a higher proportion of our grade two positions than they do in higher grades. Unfortunately, this has been, and still is, common across the US. It's not just a Winuski problem. Fair pay, as informed by the trustworthy sources that we've referenced, helps to build trust with our employees, and again, sharing this information, so that the council has a fuller picture of the impacts of this change. So this suggested wage of $22.50 per hour is based on trustworthy data sources. It's also in line with the union contracts. Raising wages does cost money, but it also may reduce turnover and training costs. Higher pay helps reduce turnover and therefore supports a stronger or stable workforce over time. My goal is to show both the benefits and the downsides, so the council can make an informed choice. We arrived at the $22.50 by utilizing data from the Vermont Legislative Joint Fiscal Offices 2025 Vermont Basic Needs Budget and Living Wage Report that came out in January.
That is a typo on the slide, by the way. It was 22.
As well as MIT's Living Wage Calculator for Vermont. On page seven of the VTJFO's report, it indicates a livable wage of $23.98 in urban areas. While the executive summary of this report states 1953, this is for a single person in shared housing. And looking further at the report on page eight, the breakdown of cost estimates, or excuse me, estimates doesn't include any student debt nor entertainment. The report also estimates housing at $1,476 per month, including utilities. With utilities in Winuski averaging between $450 to $600 a month, this would bring the housing number to just over $1,000 per month, which is lower than the average monthly market rate print, excuse me, market rate rent prices based on the fiscal year 2025 Winuski landlord survey data, which was completed by our Housing Initiative Director Jasmine Hurley. MIT's Living Wage Calculator has Vermont's living wage at $23.95, which is very close to the VTJFO's report. And the $22.50 also comes very close to where the equivalent grade two position's starting rate for the ASME union contract is.
Thank you, Jesse. And the ASME is the union that represents our public works employees, as well as our code enforcement.
Focused on traffic, parking.
Two questions. What is the current wage that folks are coming in at that level? And Jesse, why are you not asking for the $23.95?
So let me get the exact number from what they're coming in. Give me just a moment here to pull it up. So right now, the grade twos start at 2062 and can come in as high as 2232. That's depending upon education and experience as it relates to the position that they're coming into. And Thomas, what was your second question?
Why are you not requesting the higher amount from the MIT calculation?
So we didn't want to create any kind of internal disparity with entry-level union staff, as well as balancing progress towards local wage with affordability. Again, we're trying to avoid the day compression that Elaine had mentioned earlier in the presentation.
Kind of related to that, would this, it sounds like there's a little bit of a range right now. Is that kind of expected for this too? Like is $22.50 the base? And if they have more education and experience, they would get more than that?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, so, starting in at $22.50 at step one, we have the ability to bring them in between the step one and the step five. The step five would, would bring them to that $23.95. So it gives us the opportunity to potentially bring someone in at the livable wage, depending on their experience and education.
Thank you.
And for clarity, you're looking at the recommended base rate for a single person?
Single person, not in shared housing, yes.
And without dependents?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jesse before we continue? All right. Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
Paul, next slide. All right, continuing with what's in my proposed general fund budget. Now, it's the strategic investment time as directed by council. So additional fire captain, I referred to this earlier. The two main strategies in my budget are, that are designed to lessen the gap in fire response. The first one, promoting a position, that one was cost neutral. This is, second one is not. The total cost, including benefits of this new position, is just over $138,400. Again, you can remember in that earlier graph, the light blue in the middle, that was this position. Continuing, members of council may recall, we had an evening fire captain in the fiscal year 2026 budget as well. At what we budgeted at the time, we were not able to attract someone. We made some adjustments and were able to hire some additional capacity, but not enough. We are seeing a troubling decline in fire response, justifying more investment in full We are seeing a troubling decline in fire response, justifying more investment in full-time staffing. This budget includes what we believe is enough in the current market to attract someone for an evening fire captain role. The long game is sleeping quarters and a different staffing model, but we aren't ready for that. We first do need to complete the building study for the fire department, that is in the fiscal year 2026 budget. The fire chief is online right now, so if you have any questions to help him prepare for his presentation next week, please feel free right now, or of course, you can email them if you think of them later. All right, continuing, so, the parks and, the second bullet down, parks and trails maintenance position, which would be seasonal. Our parks and trails are supervised by our community services department, and maintained by our Department of Public Works. So the challenge of this arrangement is that peak demand for parks and trails maintenance is also when public works is packing their summer work in, which, they're great teammates, and very collegial, but sometimes it can be frustrating, despite great intentions and great manners, and then also result in complaints from the public from time to time. So part-time seasonal position, because we would not have to provide benefits, is, I would call it an inexpensive solution to this challenge, at just over $12,100. Elsie, did you ask a question about equipment needs for this position? We're still working on answering that, and we'll do so at the latest during the community services presentation in January. Third one down, human resources information system. I'd mentioned this a bit during the reserves conversation. These are software systems that automate the administrative aspects of human resources, including recruiting, hiring, onboarding, benefits, and performance management. Other features can include human resources, resources, and compliance support. I've included $5,000 that would cover the add-on to our existing payroll system that would provide these sorts of benefits, in terms of HRIS. Just seeing Jesse still, yeah. Does anyone have any questions about that while we still have Jesse?
Do you remind me, do you have one in mind, or would that be going out to?
Yeah, so Jesse and Angela did vet several, but it came down to, we would have to transition to another payroll system, which set everyone's hair on fire.
Thank you.
Jesse lost his hair because of that. And so, we looked, luckily, our existing payroll system has an add-on, which is the $5,000 that we include in there.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So hopefully, the references come back good, because if not, we'll have to do something about that.
And Jesse, is this going to free up your time, so that you can work on some of those longer-term projects that you've been hoping to get to?
Well, once the integration is complete, and I've got all the data in there, it's going to save me a considerable amount of time.
Yeah, it's interesting. We were just having a conversation with a consultant today, that, who intimated that getting one started is very time-consuming, as a project in itself, so, we've, yeah, we're, we're thinking about how to tackle that, too.
Is there a period of time that the consultant mentioned, as far as onboarding?
She did not. I'm guessing it varies a lot by size of place, but hopefully, a, um, a company would be able.
Like a couple of weeks versus a couple of months?
Probably months, yeah.
It might be a year. I've weirdly actually been a part of building two different HMR systems.
Oh, really? Interesting. Once you're out of council, maybe we can hire you.
But, so, once ready. Huge, huge investment, but super useful.
Good to have firsthand experience with that on council. All right, third, sorry, fourth bullet down. So I already spoke to this one earlier. The increase to the capital plan to meet needs and capacity for fiscal year 2027. It includes debt costs related to renovating the police department. That's an important retention and recruitment measure. It's so important that the police chief prioritized this over other investments, and made some other sacrifices to, again, try and make the tax rate increase a little bit less, so that this could be prioritized. The increase to the capital plan also includes debt costs to rehabilitate the parking garage elevator, and add sidewalk to the East Spring Street, up, add sidewalk to East Spring Street, up to the intersection with East Allen Street, also known as Hoods Crossing, for all you locals. A reminder that this capital plan increase does not catch us up fully on municipal infrastructure, or fire safety needs, or other needs in other departments that have been identified as community priorities and plans. But, you know, why budget for things you can't actually carry out? Any questions on this one?
Yeah, I, maybe I'm wrong on this. I thought the state was going to pay for some of that sidewalk work at Hoods Crossing when they do. Now you're shaking your head.
Yeah, they, they, they gave us a flat no on that.
Okay, we were asking, okay.
The possibility, though, is that we, we would, of course, apply for the bike-ped grant, that's usually an annual inclusion in the state budget, but there's no guarantee that we'd get it, so we should budget for it in case we don't.
Definitely. Okay.
But they are providing project management oversight, as it relates to the traffic signal work. So in a way, there's some labor savings, even if it's not direct cost for the sidewalk work itself.
No, that's definitely a savings.
Yes.
That's a good point. Yeah, the, the timing is very strategic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because of cost, cost effectiveness.
When, so I know, you, you mentioned that the chief, for example, was foregoing some other asks, to ask for the rehab of the PD. Will he still be presenting those other asks to us, though, when he does his presentation, just so that we know what they are?
No, but I will review them now, and then if you want to ask them in more detail, you're of course welcome to, during, or between, or after.
Perfect, thank you.
Of course. Anything else? All right, next slide. So what's not in? Oh, wait a minute, that's the wrong one. What's reduced? So this slide is for a list of budget items where we made reductions. This was, again, to avoid a higher projected tax rate increase than the already proposed. The first one, level-funded some supply budgets. Honestly, this was not a lot of benefit, but it were the least impactful to make. And we even did include increases that were in line with cost of living, online items where our history, our spending history supported that. So we didn't just blindly cut them all. For the second one, level-funded police department training. So this was one of the items where he would have asked for $17,000, but cut it down to the usual $15,000. And we can actually make up some of that with one-time funds, called asset forfeiture funds. Those are proceeds we sometimes receive when the justice system receives the ill-gotten assets of criminals. This comes to us when we provide law enforcement support to the drug task force. We currently don't have anyone assigned to that detail, so we wouldn't get more asset forfeiture funds on a regular basis, although sometimes our detective helps out, and then we were able to get something through that.
One thing on that is, because we've explored use of those funds for multiple things over the years, is, it seems very labor-intensive to get approval, so, for use of those funds?
Justin's not on. Angela might remember. I think we, this was one where it was a listed acceptable use, as opposed to one we'd have to ask about.
Okay. All right.
That is correct. Training is an allowable use, always.
That's great.
Thanks, Angela. Let's see, the next one is zeroed out police department part-time budget. This saved about $24,000. And this, again, was justified similar to the fire department. We haven't had anyone work part-time, given that these employers are typically also police department, police officers elsewhere, and might even also be putting overtime there already, because most departments are short-staffed. So it made sense to try and find some savings there. The last one here, no funding for traffic study. I know it's not particularly popular with some segments of our community, many segments of our community. So the first step of traffic calming policy is to do a traffic study. However, given, again, the projected tax rate increase, I took it out of my proposed budget. I'll note that our experience so far, and our informed opinion, is that usually these complaints warrant enforcement, rather than infrastructure. But of course, as anything else, this item can be added to the budget options tool that Bryn's been referring to. They're estimated, as of last year, at about $5,000 per study. So if you'd like to see what, including that, would do to the projected tax rate, just say so, and we can put it in the tool.
I would say that we've only done two studies so far, and one did indicate measures were warranted, whereas the other one, Richard Street, did not.
Fair enough. Anything else on this slide?
I can talk about it on the next slide.
Okay.
Are, are we thinking of, and this might not be the place for this, of kind of traffic calming, as, again, thinking of our reserves? Is that a recurring, like, does that, or is it more of a one, one-time, in quotes, cost?
Yeah, that's fair. I think, given, well, actually, I'll have to look. So the number of requests we've gotten, we keep on the website. I don't know what we're up to. I don't know if Bryn has it off the top of her head.
It's close to a dozen.
Yeah, so if you, two dozen? My goodness.
Two, one dozen. Two, it's close to.
Oh, close to one dozen, right.
A dozen, yes.
It's like that time I asked for $52 bills, and they gave me $52 one-dollar bills. Yes, so traffic calming, if there's a dozen, and we started that a couple of years ago, I don't know at what rate they're coming in, either. So I think logically, they would die off after a while, but it might make sense to include a low number in the budget for a while, and then take it out, or use it to build up, you know, actual infrastructure reserve.
And I would just reiterate that, at our joint fiscal and infrastructure meeting on last Thursday, no, two Thursdays ago, that the group discussed having funds for measure implementation, because we've heard multiple times that the Department of Public Works should have the skillset to do the assessments in-house. And when we've talked to CCRPC about borrowing equipment for that, they seemed amicable to loaning that to us, so.
Yep.
It would be more of a desire from the commission to have funds for implementing measures that have been identified, and with the hopes that staff actually are able to do those studies, as they've indicated.
So something to discuss.
Yeah.
Okay, what's not in? I'm going to go horse-talking about this one. Yes, thank you, Paul. So council also asked to see everything. This is not actually everything. It's what I would consider the most strategic of everything, that I did leave out of my budget proposal. I mentioned the top one already, additional emergency services dispatcher. The second one, 16th police officer, so as I mentioned just now, many traffic speeding complaints end up being appropriate for enforcement versus infrastructure. We currently have 15 officers, which is fine, actually. That's not the issue. Historically, we've almost always had 16 officers. We had to go down to 15 a few years ago, because there was a budget gap caused by, at that time, we were using a March-to-March cost of CPI, Consumer Price Index, change. So we couldn't predict during a budget time, and we, yeah, it was a bad year, so. The only way we could make up that shortfall was to go to 15, which has been a strain on the department, not because it can't function on 15. It does great on 15. What it can do great on is 14, or 13, or 12, and when you're at 15, it takes one vacation, a sick day, and, or a sick medical leave, and a retirement, and pretty soon, you're down to 12. And we are anticipating three retirements in fiscal year 2027. So it is risky for us not to be proposing a 16th officer, to restore the 16th position. Again, trying to keep that tax rate increase low. The third item here, increase to health reimbursement account funding. So the city offers health reimbursement accounts to partially cover staff health insurance deductible costs. The city has not historically covered 100% of the deductible. This encourages employees to be thoughtful with their spending, where they can be. However, we offer a fixed amount, and we have not adjusted that fixed amount in some time, so the gap has widened. Absent other budgetary pressures, I would normally want to propose that employees be helped to a smaller out-of-pocket health cost. Again, trying to keep that proposed tax rate low by not proposing that this year. The fourth bullet down here, the city offers scholarships, so that residents have more opportunity to access our range of programs at less or no cost. This includes Thrive Out-of-School Care and Recreation Programs. We've never had a dedicated budget for this. Instead, we treat it as foregone revenue, so it would make sense to include it in the budget, but we're functioning without it now, so, you know, another year. Next one down, fire moved to different staffing model for full coverage. I alluded this to a bit, since we're not ready for it, I'm not going to go into more detail here. Feel free to ask Chief Audi about it next week. Next one down, capital improvement plan study. I think there is actually a few, so for example, maybe this bridge here, the two bridges that are over the railroad tracks. But the one I was thinking about here, that council's heard about before, is the Riverwalk Capital Needs Assessment. So we are at our most strategic, when we study options first, before budgeting for an expense, and we have not done that study yet for the Riverwalk, because compared to other facilities that we have, that one has a lower safety impact, so we have not budgeted for a study of that yet. The fourth, from the bottom, community and economic development officer. Winuski had a full-time, call them CDOs sometimes, CDO, until 2022, when they resigned. In 2023, I made the decision to pivot some of that funding to a significant need that the CDO had partly been working on, which was on housing. And that has proved to be a worthwhile investment. We're able to make a lot more progress on housing initiatives than we were before Jasmine was hired. However, we have not lost the need for economic vitality either, imagine that, also among our master plan goals. In fact, when we talk about diversifying revenue beyond property taxes, it can come from economic vitality, because we do have local options taxes here, which come from economic activity. So our business community doing well not only benefits our community directly by providing amenities and services, but also indirectly by offsetting property taxes. They're doing so now at the tune of about half a million dollars. I have not included a CDO in my proposed budget, again, to keep the projected tax rate increased to a strategic minimum, and we do have an Economic Mobility and Opportunity Special Assistant, that is partly grant-funded for 30 months, so it doesn't make sense to expand staff now. And I'll describe this position a bit more later on. Third, from the bottom, some of council has heard this case before, for increasing the senior center director to full-time, and we heard that interest, related interest from Elsie during her interview with council. We are pretty sure a full-time director would provide well-attended programming, that she can't as a part-time person. However, again, given the level of acute need and other city functions, I've left that out of my budget proposal again. Second to the, from the bottom, we currently provide stipends just to the inclusion and belonging commissioners. That's been funded by a grant for three years, thanks to the private, the equity director at the time. My fiscal year 2027 proposed budget does include that expense, because that grant does run out this fiscal year. Though stipends have promoted inclusion and belonging commissioner engagement, when we survey, commissioners say that, some of them say, that they would not have served on it but for that stipend. I'm not convinced that this stipend would be enough to promote participation in our other commissions. Some of the other municipalities I'm aware of that pay stipends have not seen that effect. However, Winuski is unique, so it could be different here. I'm not entirely taking it off the table, I just haven't proposed it, because to go from, the price tag, from going from one commission to five total, is, would be rather expensive. And it actually would be from zero to five, because it's been grant-funded for three years. As also part of that item, I'm confident saying this, even if council feels awkward about talking about it, an increase to the council stipend might help more people consider serving, in a, in a way that maybe is not accessible now. However, given the amount of work it takes, I'm not sure that the community would pay enough to what would be a reasonable hourly rate, so haven't included that. And lastly, are the, to offer Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement System to non-union staff. Some of our non-union, actually, so our union staff and the associated department heads, which are also young, non-union, some of them are on the system, for sure, it's called EMERS. It's a state-run pension system. It's a defined benefit system, not just defined contribution, meaning as long as you've put in the time, in theory, you're guaranteed to know what you're going to get. to know what you're gonna get when you retire, which is quite a benefit these days. I say in theory because several years ago, the Vermont State Treasurer at the time said that the VEMERS was one of the best-funded pension systems in the country. More recently, uh, given the rate of retirements and the aging profession, it's not necessarily as secure in the future according to the current state treasurer, last I heard, which was a bit ago. All that said, the benefit is attractive to many whose futures are otherwise subject, subject to the stock market. Although I, I should say, those of us that do, are fortunate to have retirement plans thanks to city taxpayers, we are, are fortunate when so many people don't even have any kind of retirement. And I will mention that, uh, this item is personally important to me as, um, I was in VEMERS before I came to this job and I'm not now. And it would make an appreciable difference to my security in retirement. It was the one point I brought up when negotiating my contract, um, and council at the time did agree to look at it. And there are other staff here who would also like to be in VEMERS. However, again, haven't put it in because of the financial impact. It would also reduce our flexibility in future years to be transparent about the cons as well as the benefits. One of the reasons VEMERS can be successful is because of their strict rules. So, for example, once an employee group is in, it cannot come out. Individuals cannot come out of VEMERS. And the state sets the rates, so you can see why it could be well-funded, because they can project what's gonna happen, they fund it, and then that's it. As long as you don't have expected rates of retirement.
Can I, can I ask with that, would that, I assume, wouldn't take into account previous years, or would it, say, if a staff had been serving for five years and then we just started, would it only be years going forward?
It would, it would take into my, account the total number.
Okay.
It would just be the number of years you weren't in.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be left out. All right, any other questions on this slide?
So, I know, and, and maybe it's already been sent, in years past, we've had the Excel sheet where we can like play with numbers.
Yes.
Would these items, or can they be included in that Excel sheet?
So, that is the perfect cue that I was gonna show you the budget options tools right now, uh, which, let's see, actually, I think I can. I wanna stop sharing for a minute, Paul, and I will attempt after a bit of fumbling.
While you fumble, I'm gonna propose a five-minute break for folks to use the restroom or stretch their legs, if that works. All right, so thirty, I don't have my, so we'll be back at seven thirty-eight. All right, we are back at a seven thirty-eight, um, Elaine.
Okay, so, can I actually go over there with my pointer? Ah, okay, cool, thank you. So, yes, what should I say about these things?
Or the, the person sharing.
Paul?
Uh, it's me. I don't know how to get my pointer.
Oh, you have control.
Yes. I don't know how to get my pointer over there, though. It doesn't matter. So, this is the budget options tool that the finance director put together a few years ago now. And it shows the basic stats up at the top. Because it's the, the one way I know, I know how to understand comparing apples to apples, budgets to budgets from year to year, you can just look at E fourteen, the estimated percent increase. Okay, cool, thanks. Uh, E fourteen, yeah. So, it's, right now, it's reading six point four seven percent, which is my proposed budget. So, if you go, there's other numbers there if you understand budgets in different ways. Uh, if you go below row eighteen, those are all the options we've included. Most of the strategic investment items are in there and set to default for inclusion. That's how we got to six point four seven. Uh, you can, at any time, council can ask to include other, uh, lines in here. We would give it a kind of a, a, a summary name in column B, the amount of the, of the, what the cost would be in column C, uh, do the, um, the toggle in row, in a column D. And then in column G, we would explain what the impact was if we turned that on or off. So, I'll email this to council afterwards. I didn't wanna provide it in advance because last year it created some confusion that we were already proposing cuts and changes when it was like, no, this is just an example and some of the stuff that staff have talked about, but in the, by no means like, um, a done deal, so. These, this is what council has access to as a tool.
Yeah, this is wonderful. It's super helpful for us, for, for the new folks. Um, I mean, I, sorry to wanna put more work on you and Angela and Elaine, but I would truly love to see all of the unfunded needs in that column along with, um, funding for traffic studies. Um, I've, I've had this conversation with the city manager and a few councillors at this point, but I am really interested in exploring what it would look like to fund many of these unfunded needs. Uh, I've, I've been on council for a few years now and our unfunded needs list continues to grow, which it will continue to do so if we keep putting them on unfunded needs, so. Personally, I'd love to see all of these items in the, the spreadsheet so that we can toggle around with that as we have these discussions going, going forward the next couple of, few weeks.
All right. Yeah, the beauty of the spreadsheet is that it's a very quick way to see what the impact is for council and then we don't have to integrate it into the budget until it's decided.
Yeah.
Clarifying question for slide twenty. Um, are all of those unfunded needs, um, considered recurring expenses rather than one-time expenses?
That is a good question. Uh, do you want to, um...
I guess we could say that it's only a one-time fund.
We're just looking at the difference between.
Those are all ongoing.
Okay. I, it looked like it from a glance, but I.
Oh, no, sorry. The capital improvement plan study is not ongoing.
I was wondering that one might be.
And I, I will say, you know, Elaine, I appreciate you referencing the awkwardness about council discussing their own stipends. When Christine, the former mayor, left, she sent me a document, a hefty document of extensive study about the benefits and quite honestly, the needs of paying your elected representatives as well as what we have would be commissioners. I didn't exactly call it that, um. But there's ample evidence that's showing that paying folks increases the ability of people to be able to participate. Also, just for the people who are doing the work to feel, um, a little, a little extra, you know, love from the community in doing said work. Um, I completely agree that the amount that we would likely need to pay somebody to be able to like fully remove any barrier from any member of the community from participating in council is, uh, probably not in any of our lifetimes maybe happening in Winuski. Um, but I think it's worth exploring bumps to what is currently available to council. Also, just any money for commissioners.
Yeah, I feel like that kind of aligns with the, the discussion, what's already in here with the livable wage and the equity considerations, um. Yeah, a lot of those studies show that it especially helps, um, folks who are often less, less represented in these positions to access them.
We have gotten feedback and it's not necessarily anything that is a budget item. It's more of a, not even a policy decision per se, but where members of the community cannot meet, even, you know, from co- public comment earlier today about during dinnertime, during times when families are putting kids down. Um, I don't know that it's feasible to change the time of day when we, when council meets or when commissions meet. Um, I know that there's some partner organizations that meet at seven, seven-thirty in the morning. Um, whereas others may not need to, uh, and then others that meet at four PM, like the airport commission, so I don't, I don't know, that's not necessarily a funding conversation, but if we're looking at mechanisms more broadly to increase engagement, timing of meetings may be a contributing factor.
That's a good point, yeah. Um, one other thing for this, so I said, you were hoping to add the funding for traffic studies, but to Bryn's point, you know, once we funded the traffic studies, we know how much it's gonna cost. Is there anywhere that we could put, or could we put it in the doc, the, the toggle options? The cost of some of the traffic studies that we, like, LaFountain Street, for example, had multiple
Yeah.
Different approaches that we could take alongside funding.
And I wasn't sure because of the capital project, capital budget policies, like, it would last ideally longer than five years, whatever the
Right.
measures implemented would be, and presumably it would cost more than five thousand dollars, so.
I do believe they do.
I, I wasn't sure how, and that was a question that I was gonna relay to Angela as part of my overarching budget questions, if I like. How would we incorporate that in, into our budget discussions best? Cause there are, I think, a number of things, like the RFP, where that's more of a capital
Right.
item rather than necessarily a general fund item. So, how would we incorporate requests that would be capital fund requests versus general fund on, ongoing requests?
Yeah, so for things that you anticipate to continue, keep, um, coming in, like Aurora, Aurora was talking about earlier, you could, it's like a general fund contribution to the capital fund. You could increase it by like some reasonable amount that, um, Public Works Director could advise on. Angela, did you have other thoughts? That's why, come on.
Uh, no, that was specifically what I was gonna say. Anytime we add something that's capital in nature to the budget, it gets added to the capital contribution, um, from the general fund that gets put over into our capital budget.
Okay, that's, that's good, that's helpful. Thanks for the clarification.
Moving some shells around. The shells matter a lot to some people and the rest of us were like, okay, whatever.
Understandable.
But, uh, yes, it, the shell, where the shell, how the shells are, yes, it's, it doesn't matter. Uh, anything else related to the budget options tool? Oh, uh, since you brought it up, council, it's not a perfect answer, but council can actually decide when it meets during the organizational meeting, but that's after you get seated, so.
That's March, yep.
Yeah, it, but the point is, it's like, if you don't know what's gonna happen, are you gonna run? It's not the perfect solution, but you can actually change it. You have the power to change it if you wanted to. All right, next slide, please. All right, so to look at the summary numbers of my proposed bu- budget, uh, slide after this, Paul, thanks. Uh, the council-directed budget constitutes an increase of half a million over last year. The median Winuski, so that's that number on the top right, five hundred thousand, three hundred and seventeen. The median Winuski home assessment is four hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars. So, the chain, and, uh, for those of you aren't used to thinking about this all the time, uh, like me, the median means half of the homes in Winuski are assessed at higher and half of them are less. So, if you have a home that's assessed at the median value, the change to your median quarterly tax bill, uh, that, or the change to your quarterly tax bill would be seventeen dollars and thirty-five cents. Uh, for the year, it would be sixty-nine dollars and forty cents if we adopted the, or if council adopted the, uh, my proposed strategic investment budget. If you're more used to think, that's like that, there's, uh, six rows at the bottom, so the first through third rows explains that. And then if you're used to thinking in averages, the average tax bill impacts of the last three there. Okay, next slide, please. So, next, we'll be presenting a review of all the funds and presenting the general government budgets. Any questions before I do that? All right, uh, next slide, please. So, while the biggest, the general fund, is just one of six funds, so the following slides will review the bigger picture of all the rest of the funds. Next slide. Uh, so, including the general fund, all the funds together, you can see all the budgets together total almost sixteen million dollars and that's up six point two seven percent from this current fiscal year. Next. This slide shows the expenses across all the city's service areas under my proposed budget. Uh, notice that as appropriate, public works and capital are the biggest share. And that's because municipal infrastructure, including buildings, water lines, sewer lines, and sewer treatment, roads, sidewalks, and equipment for all of that is expensive. My husband and I like to play this game where we're go- visiting bigger cities and we see fleets of vehicles out there and like, that's a million dollars sitting right there. That's four point, five million dollars sitting right there. Uh, okay, next slide. Highlights of other funds. So, unsurprisingly, the water and wastewater funds both need increases. Both increases are lower than last year's increases, however, and of course, the Public Works Director will review these in a lot more detail in the first meeting in January. Uh, next, please. So, as for neck, uh, what's next, again, uh, next week, you've got, um, public safety, so police, fire, and code. And then the week after that, public works and capital improvement plan fund. And then finally, community services before your budget discussions, uh, for the overall. So, definitely encourage you all to ask questions as you go and, but also encourage you to keep your mind open. I know all these sounds very, things sound very exciting and, and convincing as we're going through, but of course, your difficult job is to try to balance all those things as well as affordability concerns for the community, um, at the end. So, keep in mind, there are going to be a few final votes required of you. So, it'll be the general fund budget and approval of the warning for town meeting day, including those bond votes, which again are the East Spring Sidewalk Extension. That'll be five hundred thousand dollars coming out of the general fund. Uh, police department, building improvements, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars from the general fund. And the parking garage elevator replacement, which is just an estimate right now, a rougher estimate, at three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars from the parking fund, which is great. Actually, it shouldn't say replacement there, sorry. It should say, uh, renovation or rehabilitation. We, we thought we would have, going to have to replace it, which would have been a lot more expensive, so luckily, we have a contractor that said that we could just rehab it. I also need to approve the individual enterprise and special revenue funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven and then approve fee and rate resolutions for water and wastewater. Let's see. So, uh, back to the bond votes there.
Yeah.
The, uh, the total project estimates are listed on the slide, but keep in mind, it, because voters should know what they're on the hook for. But keep in mind that these would be loans, so the cost would be spread out over thirty years. It's not that this is all gonna hit in your taxes next year if they are approved. Any questions about this slide? All right, moving on. Uh, that was the end of my budget overview presentation. I'm now going to go into the general administration budgets. Next, please. General government, next, oh, um, yeah. So, these are staff, uh, that are considered to be part of general government departments. Under the administration department on the left, we have the city clerk's office, which maintains official records, holds elections, takes payments, and manages certain licenses and permits. The other parts of the administration department provide support across city departments, including financial management, staff recruitment and retention, and communications with the community. The last two positions are a bit different from the rest. Uh, this used to be an equity director. A few years ago, I made the decision to pause that position after the existing director, um, resigned. Since then, I've been, we've been sort of in a holding pattern with that position because I felt that the staff essentially wasn't ready for that position. Uh, and now, we've been trying to ramp back up into, uh, having more equity, um, expertise on staff. So, again, we, not only, uh, were we not ready in, um, implementation sense, we also weren't ready from a capacity sense in terms of, there's plenty of appetite and commitment and, uh, increasingly knowledge on, on staff. They had, certainly had plenty when I got here, but they have even more now. Uh, there, but there's only so many hours in the day that they can actually integrate advice from a director. So, last year, uh, council approved and the voters approved a contribution for a shared position for an equity policy advisor. Uh, originally envisioned, it would be shared across six communities. Unfortunately, only two of us passed that. Winuski, of course, is, was one of them. Essex Junction was the other. And we voted for, uh, contributions of twenty-five thousand dollars each. This is not enough to pay a full-time person, of course. So, the two cities and the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission, which is hosting this position, have been working on a smaller work plan. Have been working on a smaller work plan that can be delivered by their existing outreach and engagement manager. With the idea that the work will be enough, of enough interest to the other communities that they will hopefully budget. Enough contributions to collectively pay for a full-time person in the future. We did a survey based on her capabilities and got a good response, response for this, uh, work plan that we're starting to implement now. Uh, so I am optimistic, uh, for future years. In the meantime, uh, Essex Junction and Winuski, we will make use of this equity resource in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The second part-time position there that's listed is also shared with, in this type case, four other committed communities. So it does also include Essex Junction, uh, Shelburne and South Burlington. The, as I mentioned before, the salary for this position is covered by a grant for thirty months. And the four communities share the cost of the benefits for that position equally, that's a requirement of the grant. And again, the person started today and will help us strategize on economic mobility and opportunity. For our traditionally marginalized community members. She's partly writing her own work plan, so I couldn't tell you more than that just now. On the right, uh, other departments that fall under the heading of general government are planning. Which plans for and administers the growth and development of the city through long-range planning and regulatory review. Uh, that ensures that land development is consistent with adopted goals and objectives. And there's no percha- proposed changes to that budget. The purpose of the housing office is to develop and implement initiatives that support a mix of quality housing. That maintains and enhances Winuski's unique sense of place and supports the needs of the entire community. And finally, the parking office supports a supply of publicly accessible parking for economic vitality while managing for safety. Although its situation in the public works department for budgetary oversight, the parking is jointly managed. By a cross-departmental team because it touches several areas. Uh, the code enforcement officer positions that mostly enforce parking are supervised by the police department. One of the more complicated arrangements in the city. Uh, any questions on that, that, before we move on? Alright, general administration is mostly services, so the budget is largely related to people, either in staff or professional services. This is what we call the roll-up or summary, uh, view of the general fund administration budget. Uh, and there's three sets of columns here, and the first column is the fiscal year twenty twenty-five actuals. Actual spender expenditures, the gray area is the budget and projected year-end, so there's uncertainty there. And then, uh, the last one is my proposed budget for this department. So you can see the changes year over year. Let's see, the next slide.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, is there a reason why the contracts and professional services are expected to be lower than they currently are?
Lower.
So projected year-end is seven tre- seven hundred twenty thousand? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, yep.
And FY estimate is seven hundred eight thousand.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Are you asking about the ch- change for this year or next year or both?
Um, I'm, I guess both, and I'm wondering if there's a comment there that we're not seeing as well with the green.
Angela?
And that's seven twenty.
One second, that encompasses a number of departments that I have to scroll through very quickly to see what the change is. So I know that part of it may be related to, um. Some grants that we have right now.
Hmm, working communities challenge?
Potentially, um. Trying to see what is, um, projected to be over budget in the current fiscal year. Yep, it is, uh, communities challenge. Uh, the professional services in the city manager's budget has a projected year-end that's fifty thousand dollars more than budget. Due to, um, the grant that we received.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is the regional programs, these are pretty much all contracts. So again, it's the same actuals projected for this year and then budgeted. This includes Green Mountain Transit, uh, I've listed this, listed somewhere else, um, downtown Winuski. County, CCRPC.
Winuski Valley Parks?
Yes, I'm looking Angela.
Yep, and VLCT renew, yep.
Dues, okay. Uh, Vermont League of Cities and Towns, yep.
We, are we, I don't know how to phrase this the way I want to, but underpaying VLCT?
No. Alright, next slide please. So across those two proposed fiscal year, oh, this is where, twenty twenty-seven budget is included these items. Uh, the more significant contracted services increases, um, that's arbitrarily is over two thousand dollars. Uh, that are in the general admin areas include, in descending order. Telephone and internet budget increase of just over twenty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, note though, that this is not an increase in actual expenses over fiscal year twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. What happened is we budgeted for savings that we did not realize in this fiscal year. We did need to modernize our phone system anyway, so. Yeah, uh, it wa- it wasn't like we could avoid that expense. Um, we couldn't even get replacement parts anymore for this phone system that we had. I think several less, especially the clerk's office were like, hoping that we would last it until we had a voice-over internet protocol. Which we do now, thanks to a lot of effort by Paul Sarn, so thank you for that. Uh, payroll incre- so again, for the contracted, so we're still in the first line here. Payroll services increase of fifteen thousand dollars. Insurances went up nine thousand dollars, other software services increased just over five thousand. Uh, almost five thousand for planning professional services and related to the comprehensive plan update. Uh, systems for records, uh, increase of just over three thousand. And then, uh, the normal cyclical election supplies, up almost three thousand dollars for a midterm election year, that's normal. It goes up and down. And then for county taxes, about twenty-five hundred dollars. Next one, about twenty-seven percent of the budget increase for livable wage that, uh, the HR director presented. Would be in general administration, so that's that sixteen hundred sixty-six amount. The rest of the regional service cost increases I mentioned previously, are there any questions about these items?
Is town meeting TV gonna be asking us for more than a thousand dollars?
No, during our November meeting, they did not.
Correct, yeah, I was trying to think, cause between the two of them, one of them always bills total, but those are only getting one more. And that, but that's Winuski Valley Parks or six, so that's, yeah, print's correct. Alright, next, uh, that was the end of the general government presentation. Uh, now we'll do a quick march through the other two funds that I managed myself, uh, next couple slides. Thank you, uh, so the Community Development Fund pays for parts of several staff and staff training who advance community development. It has a healthy fund balance circled in red, uh, partly because we spent down on Grant Match a little slower than planned. My proposed general fund budget increase, increases again, my gen- proposed general fund budget increases the contribution by ten thousand dollars. Again, above the historical two hundred thousand dollars into this fund, uh, to bump up what we can do for community development. In fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we will likely spend some of this on the comprehensive plan update. In fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, we may have some needs related to opportunities. The Economic Mobility and Opportunity Special Assistant, uh, helps us develop, world's longest job title. Uh, this fund historically provides the match needed for planning grants, like the municipal planning grant for the equitable housing needs assessment. That's underway, uh, this year and has been for a bit. Next slide, our com- combined parking fund, which includes the current garage, on-street meters. And new garage is projected to be healthy, however, there's a big caveat here. Looking ahead, I need to lease at least, no, I need to lease two hundred and eleven spaces. At, uh, a specific rate in the old garage by July one, twenty twenty-seven. In order for the city to be able to make its financing obligations for the new garage. Long story there, I won't get into right now. Alright, next slide, almost at the end. One more please.
I'm sorry, just.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, fun topic for all, when was, our gen- I know we altered fines. But when were parking fees last looked at?
So we, this time, we looked at, uh, pretty much all of them to see which ones caused more complaints. Or are in, in issue, like we have to issue them all the time, maybe, meaning that maybe the fine isn't enough. Uh, so we did generally look at all of them at that time.
Okay, and when, that, what they're currently at. Um, I hate I'm about to say this, but it's quite cheap to park in Winuski. So I was just wondering when, I guess my question more meant, when were they lo- put at our current level?
Are you asking about the meter, meter fees?
Yes.
Okay, per, yeah, that's a different, uh, that requires a different answer than the one I just gave. So we last looked at the meter fees, I think, last year, starting the year before that. And we thought they should be increased al- also, so glad to hear that there's a, at least one member of council that thinks that's worth looking at. The reason why we didn't is because of Main Street construction, it just didn't seem like a good time to increase meter fees. Then we'll have the bridge project, so essentially, I've put that on hold until after the bridge project is done.
Yeah.
Uh, just, yeah, because there's just a lot of trepidation out there.
That makes sense, but, thank you for that.
But yes, it is, it is a little low.
Yeah.
We think it could do with more, and then if we made the first hour free in the parking garage, that would divert more traffic there, that could go there. We have what we think is a reasonable proposal, but yeah, it wasn't a good time to propose changes. Okay, challenges on the horizon, I did mention the first one. Uh, for the second one, for EMS, Saint Mike's College provides us free emergency medical services, which is quite a deal. Uh, sometimes called ambulance services, however, last month, they told us they would like us to start paying a per capita fee. Which is a common practice for towns that don't operate their own ambulance service, it relies on a third-party provider. The per capita fee amounted to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. Staff were not expecting such a high amount so soon, given that Saint Mike's had not previously indicated they were preparing to make any ask anytime soon. Uh, we assumed it was coming sometime, but not so soon. Uh, fortunately, they did agree to verbally so far, to a one-year no-cost extension to our current agreement, uh, we're working towards that now. Uh, staff will work with them over the next fro- several months to at least better understand the basis or strategy behind this request. And, but council should anticipate, uh, something related to EMS costs, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-eight.
Okay.
Is it feasible to get that agreement in writing?
That's what we're working towards.
Okay, alright.
Um, do we know the breakdown of how many incidents Saint Mike's responds to versus Burlington or Colchester?
Yes, I, John, you're on, I think Chief Audi is on, yeah. Do you have that data now, or feel free to punt until we have it, of course.
Uh, so if you're asking specific, how many EMS calls into Winuski, Saint Mike's does, it's about twelve hundred annually.
How does that compare to our neighbor, our other neighboring municipalities?
That are served by Saint Mike's, you mean? Or?
No, so like.
Come into.
Like a Burlington ambulance comes in.
That comes to, yeah, Winuski, aside from Saint Mike's.
So out of those, um, don't quote me on the numbers, I, I can try to have those for next week. Um, but out of twelve hundred, um, plus calls, I believe Saint Mike's dropped, um, two hundred and sixty. Calls, meaning they were out on another call and a mutual aid ambulance, whether it was UVM, Burlington, or Colchester. Essex had to pick those calls up.
Okay.
Another term for that is turned over, so they turn it over to another service.
Okay.
And I will make sure I have that in my presentation next week, just kind of as a bullet point that, um.
Thank you, John.
Uh, since, since you're talking about presentation, uh, if you have a org chart for the proposed, that would be helpful too. Thanks.
I don't know if this would be too difficult, John, but just so that we have all the info, if there's a way to say how much it would cost if we ran our own EMS? I know it's a, it's a big number, so I just, if we're looking at one fifty to Saint Mike's, I'd love to know like what the alternative could look like.
Yeah, uh, so can we have that for next week? I'm not sure, um, you know, cause there's so many things for us. That we would have to overcome, you know, like sleeping quarters, um, there's, there's certainly ways to do a study. Understand, you know, what it would look like if Winuski was to change to a, you know, fire EMS-based organization.
And I don't think it has to be like.
A better, an easier ask would be if this was enough, is we could tell you what Berry City pays for their.
Yes, yeah, something like that, sorry, yeah, I didn't mean like a full.
Right.
Detailed study, but just so that we have an idea of what these types of things cost, yeah.
Is it, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm good.
I'm unsure of the, um, qualifications, um. If our fire department are required to also be paramedics?
I'm sorry.
So currently, we are not doing any EMS other than basic EMS. Um, and you know, there's several different layers of levels of EMS provided. Um, so, you know, paramedic level is kind of the gold star expectation. Um, so again, that would, that's part of the cost analysis that, you know, would, would be done. Um, cause it's a different level of service that you're providing, um, you know, paramedic versus advanced EMTs. The, just the salary range in those are pretty substantial, you know, in the cost of operating at that level.
I ask because I'm wondering if there's some type of partnership opportunity, so I don't know. How many of the EMTs from Saint Mike's go on to, like, stay on, like how the retention rate is. Um, or how many move on to other, um, other municipalities or other services? And if there was a way to have some type of partnership where we essentially create a career pathway for them. To come and work at, um, you know, the Winuski Fire Department. But that, I mean, that obviously kind of expands the conversation quite a bit out of just the basics of what. Current service cu- cost coverage would need to be, but, you know, trying to think outside of the box there.
Yeah, it's certainly something that would make sense, and you might not wanna think about it once you see the price tag.
I'm sure, yeah.
Yeah.
You, if you add up current, current costs, the anticipated one fifty. Um, and anticipated, um, revenue from running an ambulance, you, you will not be whole. Um, to that process, it's a very expensive endeavor, so, um, you know. I, I would be very comfortable telling you, you know, what makes sense for Winuski is some sort of partnership. Um, you know, continuing to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think, John, you and I both came from places that had EMS with the fire, right?
Yes, and I actually have a background of starting a, you know, taking a first response agency and making it a licensed ambulance service. Um, and the challenges and kind of, you know, the cost of doing such and recruitment and retention. You know, that's, that's huge in this area, you have, you and Chittenden County, you were, you're taking the same qualified staff. And they're simply moving from agency to agency, um, depending on benefits and what makes sense for them personally. Um, and there's just a nationwide, national shortage of, of skilled people to do this work.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Alright, last substantive slide, please, Paul. Thank you, everyone, for putting the time to listen and understand, uh, to the council, and of course, to the leadership team here. Put in a lot of, uh, group think time, group thinking time, not group think. They're good at questioning each other and me. Um, and a special thank you to Angela Aldey, without whom, all of us would have a much harder time managing the city.
I appreciate you adding that, yes. Thank you very much to all of you for. I appreciate you adding that, yes. Thank you very much to all of you for acquiescing to our desire to see. Lots of things this year.
We appreciate the ask, it's always good to be able to provide some, uh, what do you call it? Preparing the ground for future conversation.
I also, uh, wanna say thank you for, uh, thank you and the team for getting the budget website updated. And the, um, public notices and announcements for the schedule and timeline, that all has been really well done. Um, very well communicated, so I just major kudos to everyone to get everything ready on time. And also to be able to post that ahead of tonight's meeting, too, so, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate, um, of course, everyone contributed to that, cause there's so much work that goes into the head of the final document being there. Uh, but certainly, Paul Sarn gets, uh, lion's share of credit this year for improving our process, making sure we knew what all the deadlines are early enough. And then also, uh, taking heed of our college intern. Uh, Aisha Mtezi, and I'm saying her last name not very well, and it's also changed now, cause she got married since. But, uh, she gave us a lot of feedback on several things for community engagement, but in particular, how to improve the readability of the budget book. I think you can agree that it is much better now than that way than it was. And thanks to her, but also, of course, thanks to Paul who took that seriously and implemented it, so, thank you, Paul.
Any other questions from council? We do have guests online, if you have any questions, please raise your hand. Alright, not seeing a question. Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Probably need some like mint tea or something after a little talking. So, our next item, uh, will be item C, Green Mountain Transit, um, ADA Assessment Methodology. Clayton, thank you for, uh, bearing with us through this meeting, you've been with us for a while. You know far more about Winuski now than, than you did when you walked in.
Put together for you with, um, uh, with the information, I really appreciate, uh, her work to, to get you pre-briefed. Um, what I wanna do is, uh, talk a little bit about the fiscal year twenty seven assessments. Um, a little bit about some of the service reductions we've done over the past year and how Winuski has fared. Um, but then, uh, focus on the ADA methodology change that we're gonna ask you to, uh, to vote on at some point. And so, for fiscal year twenty seven, um, assessments, um, the increase, uh, that we're asking for, for Winuski is five point five percent. Um, the overall assessment increase for our members, um, is six percent on average. So, Winuski is coming in a little bit under, um, the, uh, the overall increase, or the overall average increase. And so, for ab- absolute numbers, that would be an increase from two hundred and fifty-two thousand, uh, to two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Uh, for fiscal year twenty seven. Um, one of the things that's been very difficult over the past year is, um, having to reduce service. Because of the financial constraints that we've been, uh, under, and. Um, so we've seen in the last year a sixteen percent overall reduction in service in our urban operating area. Um, when you look at Winuski, the overall reduction has been nine percent. Um, and, uh, most of those, uh, most of that nine percent, uh, comes from late nights. Um, one early Saturday morning and, uh, other weekend times. So, the, um, happy to report, uh, to you all that your assessment increase is, is a bit lower than the average. Happy to report to you all that your service reduction is, is well below, uh, what the average for our members has been. I, uh, I can say, looking at our next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty seven, we still have. Um, a budget gap there that may require us to reduce service sometime in fiscal year twenty seven. Um, but we are not looking to have to do additional reductions prior to the start of fiscal year twenty seven, as we were previously afraid of. And so, I'm very happy that we're not already going through the service reduction process again, because that, uh, was something that we thought we might have to do. Um, and then the last thing I wanna mention before, uh, diving into ADA methodology is that, uh, very happy to report that. Uh, we are now, or we now officially have an IRS-recognized affiliated nonprofit. Um, this is something that's gonna give us the opportunity to, uh, um, do fundraising. But probably more importantly for us, um, is to access certain grants, uh, that are only available to nonprofits. Uh, one of the things that I, um, especially want GMT to work towards is, uh, pursuing grants. Um, that are at the intersection of public transit and human services. And I think that, uh, there may be some opportunities for us, um, to, uh, to connect those in some innovative ways. I wasn't gonna mention this, but one of the things that will give us more opportunity to look at things is that we are transferring our rural service. And so, um, our service in Franklin and Grand Isle County will go to Rural Community Transportation, RCT, starting January first. So, just in a month. And our service in Washington County will go to Tri Valley Transit in July, uh, first of next year. Um, and so, looking at the ADA methodology, uh, first off, I wanna say I'm sorry. And, uh, the reason why I'm saying I'm sorry is that we went ahead and changed our ADA me- uh, assessment methodology. Without getting your permission first, and so, our, um, statute. Requires us to get seventy-five percent of our members' approvals whenever we change our formula for assessment. Um, as a new general manager, when we worked on this, I did not realize that the formula for assessment applied to both our ADA. And our, um, fixed route service, because the fixed route service is a formula-based, you know, system. Um, where the ADA system is, is a based on actual usage. Um, so I'm apologizing that this is a change that we've, um, that I'm gonna ask you to make, that we've done for the last two fiscal years. Um, and I'm asking for it late, um, but I'm hoping that you'll see that it's, uh, uh, that's working as intended. And that, um, that you all would consider, um, a retroactive approval. And so, previously, uh, we had seen extremely high volatility with our ADA paratransit service. And so, just on background of what that is, um, anytime we have a local, um, uh, route. Uh, we are responsible for providing paratransit service within three-quarters of a mile of that route. So that if there is anyone that has a disability that prevents them, uh, from using, uh, the bus. Uh, that we would provide them an equivalent, uh, service. We contract, uh, with SSTA to provide that service, and then they provide a, a door-to-door, um, experience for folks. Um, there is a fare for that, and the fare, um, according to the FTA, the fares for paratransit can be double. The regular fare, so where our two-dollar, um, fare for, uh, for bus service. Um, it's a four-dollar fare for the paratransit service. Um, one of the problems that we had with this was, um, under the previous methodology, it was extremely volatile. And it was based, um, solely on the origin, uh, or the home, uh, location of where the traveler was. And what that meant, especially for our smaller communities, is that, um, having a single, uh, uh, user of the service. That used it multiple times a week, um, that that would really make a big impact on that community. Um, uh, for the costs, and we would see, uh, it wasn't uncommon to see increases as, you know, highest forty percent in a single year. Uh, for the paratransit costs, which, uh, which, you know, really, um, town and city managers hated. Um, as you could probably imagine. Um, under the new system, um, we look at the fact that this is a service that's based on the fixed route service. So, half of the cost is just based on the, the percentage of fixed route service that you have. Um, the other half, um, is looking at not only the, uh, the origin of the rider, but the destination. And I think as, uh, um, uh, highlighted in the, uh, read ahead. Uh, uh, for a community like Winuski, I think that what you're seeing is a lot of folks traveling out of Winuski into other, uh, communities. And, uh, and so, uh, I think that that is, uh, makes this methodology especially benefi- beneficial for Winuski. And so, when you look at, um, where your ADA assessment is now compared to where it was bef- uh, would have been. If we didn't make this change, um, your assessment now is about five percent lower, um, with this new methodology. Um, when we look at the, um, other, um, or we, when we look at the seven members that have ADA service. Um, Milton, um, is a member, but their only service is commuter service, and commuter service doesn't require, um, the ADA. Um, uh, paratransit, um, so we have seven of our members that have ADA, um, assessments. Uh, three of, of those members saw their assessments go up during, with this new assessment methodology, and four saw it go down. So, thankfully, that, uh, it's down here, and I'll take my lumps in the other three communities when I go talk to them. Um, so we're hoping that you'll consider retroactively approving this, uh, back to July of, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, which is when we first started using it, uh, we think the methodology is working well. And, um, I'm happy to now have a conversation with you instead of talking at you.
Well, thank you very much, um, I appreciate the apology, but it's very understandable how we got to this situation, so, um. I, I don't have any questions, it, it seems to make sense to me, but, um, councilors, if you have any further questions, please feel free to ask.
Yeah, I don't really have any, it also makes sense, um, I, it does. My concern is that, yeah, Winuski originates a lot, so it makes sense that we're now sharing the cost. When we're kinda sharing that economic, um. Vitality aspect.
I'll have to mention here that, uh, the former Winuski representative and for a time chair. Austin Davis was, uh, I understand, a big player in trying to make sure that this made it through.
Absolutely.
If you see him thinking.
Absolutely, A- Austin was the, the main driver here. Oh, maybe.
I don't know, it's like, the public has now left online, so.
Uh, quick question in terms of the, how the logistics of that plays out, just reading the summary of like. Um, you know, if a Shelburne resident takes an ADA trip from South Burlington to Winuski, Shelburne would pay for it. So, how is residency verified?
And so, what happens is, is that SSTA, um, has the origin and the destination, and then, um, they bill, you know, based on that. And so, uh, so SSTA sends us all of the, um, all of the service, and that's how we, uh, all of the data for the service, and that's how we generate the billing.
Okay, so is ST, SSTA looking at residency?
Yes, and so, the, the, because, uh, for the ADA service, they have to qualify. And so, then we'll know that, um, you know, they've gone through a process, we know that this is where their home is. And so, we know that this is their home location, and that will, you know, be sort of the, the origin, um, one. And then wherever they go to will be the, the destination.
That's what I was looking for.
Alright, in that case, I will seek a motion to approve the ADA assessment methodology as presented.
So moved. Quick point of order, do we need to say retroactive?
If you, if you wanted to clarify that, it certainly doesn't hurt.
So, retroactive to July twenty twenty-four?
That sounds perfect.
So moved. Seconded?
All those in favor? Alright, and it passes.
Hey, thank you so much. Have, have a good luck with the rest of your meeting.
We're almost there, we're almost there, oh, alright. So, we're moving on to item D, goal updates housing municipal infrastructure, economic vitality, um, Elaine?
Oh, no, I'm learning this improperly, sorry about that. Uh, it should just be economic vitality and cross-cutting. This is a holdover from when it was like this last time.
Discussion goal updates economic vitality and all cross-cutting.
So, uh, I'm going to spare you any other commentary on this agenda item in the interest of time, but I know. Maybe all of you are very interested in the update on the long-awaited language access procedure. And Paul Sarn is gonna rip through a very informative and very brief update on that.
Very brief indeed, hi again, everybody, um, so yeah, in your packet is the language access procedure. Which we, uh, enthusiastically completed, uh, back in September. Uh, we've included a memo, uh, with a few high notes, um, in addition to the procedure, those high notes include, um. Referring to the procedure as a procedure, I know that's a very governmently thing to ask, but as opposed to a plan or policy. Memo there, uh, also includes how we work with the Winuski School District to understand what languages are spoken in Winuski. So, we update that language list every, uh, August when they, you know, are doing enrollment, which is great. Um, how on-demand, over-the-phone interpretation and ISPEE cards work, um. At most, uh, but not all city locations, uh, also a note on our promo plan to announce that. We, uh, just received all of the Vermont Language Justice Project videos that outline the ISPEE card and interpretation service. Uh, and those are all at municipal locations that open out to the public, such as City Hall, Police Department, um, Libraries, Senior Center, and O'Brien Center. Uh, it also, uh, outlines how planned interpretation and written translation requests work, which is, um. A little bit different than, than on-demand, you know, we've, uh, we've lot, we have lots of experience with both of those services, mostly through, uh, A and B. Um, which is great, we have plenty of time to plan for that kind of thing, anyways, works out best, especially this, uh, impersonal reference. Other notes, uh, on how we partner with organizations like the Vermont Language Justice Project, who I just mentioned. Um, interestingly, they have, um, they have moved recently, so they made that announcement, um, there with the United Way now is just a point of interest. Um, they have developed and have been promoting their own, uh, app, which is great, a mobile app, which is sort of like a conduit to all of their video libraries. Which is really great, uh, also A and B and, and other books, um. There's also a note in there on how, uh, annual review and, uh, documentation works. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, if you have not taken a dive into the procedure itself, I, uh, I invite you to do so.
Awesome, thank you very much, Paul, um, yes, this has been very much anticipated, so it's really, really great to see. Thank you for the work, uh, to you and, and anyone else who was involved, um, council, any questions?
Yeah, I can just say that the inclusion and belonging commission did have a chance to review this. Um, definitely appreciate that, that they're kind of an ongoing part of this, uh, procedure as well.
Fantastic.
Um, it has been a long time coming, so I'm thrilled, uh, to see this come to fruition. And to finally be out, um, in the community for use and to help with cohesion and alignment and direction. Um, I, I'm, I know how much work has gone into this, I appreciate all the collaboration. Um, so congrats on getting that, um, getting that accomplishment. And, and now the, the tracking begins, right, and, and seeing how, um, how much demand there is. And, um, I'm not sure where this might come up in, in terms of budget requests that we'll be reviewing.
Yeah, so I haven't added anything to the budget for, to accommodate this, because just looking at the current budget, I think we can. I think we might have enough, uh, for now, but then we'll have a pilot year essentially, to see if it need, an increase would be needed after that.
Okay, um, and I know things are still very nascent, so looking at the memo. Um, bullet three, um, relating to phone interpretation. Um, and access for, um, staff to use in the field. For city-issued mobile phones, how many city-issue mobile phones are there?
Angela?
I think the short answer, a lot.
Yeah, there are a lot, um.
I can expand on that, just a teeny-tiny bit, while I don't have that specific number, but, I mean, so. This, I mean, this is so exciting, one of the, one of the coolest parts of this process, that sort of, um, we came through. You know, we landed on Language Link, the company, to provide the on-demand, over, over-the-phone interpretation, which was great. That contract is essentially extended to us by the, by the state government, which is great. So, we don't pay an upfront annual. So we don't pay an upfront annual cost for that. Literally the only cost that's associated is the per minute, per minute. It's usually to something like sixty cents to a dollar sixty or probably on that, but something around there. So it's really, with that, with that product, that's the only cost that's associated with that. So basically what that leaves us with is sort of an infinite ability to integrate, as you're, as you're alluding to, the service on any, any, any city fund, any city issue fund. It could be by the mobile app or again, most of that is just over the, it's a phone number you call and you choose the, the language.
Yeah, that's great. I was particularly interested in, in the mobile component. And then, you know, just curious of like what, I, I didn't have any point of comparison of, you know, is it that department heads only or, you know, how many, how many staff actually would have access to that? So that's helpful to have some context around of like, no, it should feel more ubiquitous rather than less so, which is really wonderful to hear.
We have about sixty mobile devices that we pay for between iPads and cellphones.
That's great.
Yeah, the one distinction just without on a technical level is that the, I mean, it's all languages, all spoken languages. We use just the over the phone, so it's a little, there's not, there's not, there's no heading tag there. It's very easy to access. It's just dialing a phone number and using the speakerphone. But for American Sign, the device that's out, clearly you're looking at a different.
And I would imagine sixty, all, all sixty of those are smartphones with video capability?
Probably fifty-nine of them, yeah.
I think we have a couple of flip phones that are emergency use only and like thrive.
I know. You got some burner phones out there. No, just kidding. Yeah, that's awesome. Just kidding for the record. Is there anything in this hall that you're particularly excited about or looking forward to seeing implemented?
It's gonna be slow going at first. I mean, I was gonna rag about some of the first couple of different case studies, but the first time the city clerk's office used it was to dispute a parking ticket. And that's not, maybe the most exciting thing to report on. So if I have to imagine, it's gonna be slow going at first. Once we sort of integrate the promo plan for the Vermont Language Justice Project videos, I'm sure that'll help. We'll probably need some help sharing that and, and doing some direct outreach. It's connecting with community groups and letting people know that at least the, the on-demand interpretation service is available on all those locations. And then hopefully, you know, over time, like anything else, it'll be, we are getting growth. But if I had to assume, it's probably gonna be pretty slow going at first. And so my excitement to answer your questions relies in, you know, what's, what's possible as we move forward and people, people know about this, this service, which is great.
Yeah, I'm sure other municipalities will have interest in our lessons learned and successes as well. So hopefully at the next VLCT annual gathering or the, the year after, you can share out what you're, what you've learned and accomplished with this.
Paul's already gotten national attention, actually.
I'm, I'm not surprised, to be honest.
Yeah, we are, one of the great parts about this kind of work is, one of the resources we discovered was the Municipal Language Access Network, which we're now a member of. And some of our neighboring municipalities are a member of. I know Ann Nelson Stoner is, is the Chitting County Regional Planning Commission, just became a new member. So that is a really fancy way to, to, it's an acronym, it's basically a big group, right? So we all have access to each other, some shared documents. And so one of the points of reference and review for the procedure was to share with the entire group. So hundreds and hundreds of, of small governments and state governments, a good handful of federal agencies saw it. And there were, to a point, there were two municipalities. One was Sugar Land, Texas, and another one, I believe, was, another one was in California. It's in a, I can't remember exactly what city it was, but we, we did meet with both of those agencies to discuss how we got there and, you know, everybody does it a little differently. And Winuski is certainly a unique case study with our, our language base. That's been very exciting.
Yeah, language base and size. And to your point, Bryn, we are expecting to be able to share our example with the Chitting County communities through the Equity Policy Advisor.
Nice.
Part-time position, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Well, just saying that I know that something Counselor Hurd and I advocated for pretty strongly a couple of years ago and were advised that it may need to take a longer road to develop than we wanted it to. So seeing this come together is, is really fantastic. So thank you so much.
Counselor Hurd can put that feather in their cap as they ride off into the sunset.
One thing, actually, thinking about this and connecting it to our next agenda item, would it be pertinent to shout out continuing for the state to fund this language link access as like a legislative priority?
Yes, and Ale, maybe you can talk on this a little bit. There, there's, there is some, some partner agency interest in doing so. And I think advocacy for that, especially at the state levels, it would be welcome and encouraged and kind of go with the curve.
Awesome.
Awesome. All right, we will move on to item E, which is Winuski City Council Legislative Priorities.
So Thomas, I have an addition.
So I already wrote it down. We, um, this list of priorities, so I, I truthfully forget if the former mayor would send this every new session or if she just sent it at the beginning of the biennium.
Every session.
She would do it every session. So we essentially took, or actually, I essentially took last year's memo that Ben Merrill Watt sent to the legislature. I took that and the VLCT legislative priorities that they will be advocating for. And then I reached out to councilors. Some of you got back to me with some language feedback or letting me know that some links were broken or some actual things you'd like to see us suggest. And that is what this document is in front of you. Counselor Oakley brought up a few points with me, just about some of the bill numbers that are referenced here. Some of them have turned into different bills in this biennium. Uh, sorry, in the, we're, we're late in the meeting. Last session of the current biennium. So I'm just gonna go through and update those with, I'm gonna keep the bill numbers in there because they're still the bill numbers for that session. But I'm just gonna add in the dates so to, so the legislators know which number they're actually referencing. In the first point, the first paragraph, sorry, no, the second paragraph, where it says, "And continue funding landlord tenant mediation resources similar to those available under VRAP and S-100." I'm just gonna stop it at, to funding landlord tenant mediation resources and remove the similar to those available under VRAP and S-100. I could go in and put the date for that S-100, but I think what we actually want is for them to just do the funding. It's less important where those resources were listed. So those are changes that I have, I, not shown in this document, that I will go through and add. Aurora, I just ended, added in the continue to fund language link access. So I'd like to open this time up for, as if there's anything that you would like added or anything that you spotted that needs to be changed, that you weren't able to shoot over to me via email. And then, just so you all, you know, but just as a reminder, we have our joint legislative meeting with the City of Burlington and all of our shared legislators on December 12th at eight AM. Burlington will be hosting it in one of their meeting rooms in City Hall. So I will be going over this document at that time, at that meeting. If you're able to join, great. If you're not, it's eight AM on a Friday. Everyone's got work, et cetera, so it's fine. I will definitely be there.
They will have a virtual option too?
Um, I didn't see that on the invite, but I'd imagine so. Okay. And then after that meeting, I will, unless I hear anything, you know, legislators are screaming and saying that that can't happen. If everything's fine and there aren't any further edits after that, I would just be sending this to the Speaker of the House, the President Pro Tem and committee chairs in the Senate and in the House. So with that, I'll stop talking and see if you all have any additional ads or edits.
My first wonder
Yeah.
is if some of the things listed in the first two bullets under five
Yeah.
are kind of also covered in some of, like the first in number four. Cause I feel like there's, the transportation system and the climate change are so interconnected. And I was just wondering if.
Yes. So I forgot to mention that. That was one of the things that Bryn had brought up. So I had created bullet five essentially almost entirely from VLCT's recommendations.
Gotcha.
So we had the item in number four. And then I created five and didn't kind of notice the similarities there, so I will update that as well.
Perfect. In six, I think there's a mention of declining enrollment. Is that still what kind of part of the school system is saying? Cause I know that there was declining and now there's been a little up, so.
I'll double check on that with Womer. I know that, I thought that there was still declining enrollment, but it was just that our, our scores were doing better than the state was showing that our scores were doing. But I'll double check with Womer on that.
I think with, but I don't know if it's just because they opened a pre-K.
Yeah.
Yeah, Thomas, my understanding is that enrollment actually went up two years in a row, but I don't know if they have updated data for going forward.
Yeah, okay.
So it might just be, I don't know, removing declining?
Yeah.
Not, not, not a huge, I hope. The, my one final thing is seven in item two.
Yeah.
I was just thinking about the wording in the last sentence. Fully participate in, where it says ensure immigrant and refugee families can fully participate in and contribute to Vermont communities. I, I'm wondering about adding language like while meeting growing needs in the state. Because that is, it's not just like, it's a mutual partnership.
While meeting grown needs. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We need those medical technicians. We need those teachers. So being able to get that, yeah. But otherwise, I think that's, that's exciting to include and matches what Ruth was saying.
Right. Okay, yeah, I'm happy to add that if everyone else is fine with that language.
And then those, that's my list.
Thank you, Aurora.
I would request adding an item or two to number four. With our own grant funded EV charger assessment that's happening, it'd be helpful to ensure the state is continuing to support EV charger infrastructure and subsidize, subsidies for that were right along the corridor. So hopefully they, you know, our location in proximity and to, you know, too close on wraps. Well, maybe not on wraps, but proximity to the highway is, you know, highlights our city as a location that's, that's best suited for EV chargers and, and some state funded subsidies for that. And also in part and parcel with that is encouraging continuance of state funding for, to encourage, you know, cash for clunkers program that sunsetted a couple of years ago now, as well as state, state funded EV purchaser incentives, point of sale incentives as well. Those, those have also been fully expanded and, and that program is sunset as well.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
No.
No? All right. Oh.
No.
Okay. In that case, I, thank you very much. I appreciate having extra eyes on things, cause Lord knows I had like five things pulled up as I was doing this the other, the other day. I will make those edits and I guess we could approve this now, saying that I'll make the edits and then we don't have to bring it back, if that works for people.
I'm sorry, when was the, it's the 12th, right?
Yeah. So we do have another meeting. I just don't know how long it's gonna be.
You can do it under consent.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
Yeah.
All right. So we won't approve it tonight. I'll make those edits. We'll put it under consent.
If we're not gonna look at it again, can I just request consistent spacing after each of the numbers?
Of course.
Thank you.
That's perfect. Yeah.
Thank you, Thomas, for taking the lead.
Thank you.
Jumping on this first thing.
It's funny you say that, cause as I was scrolling up and down on this, as I was waiting for us to talk about this, I realized, oh, I didn't space that the same all throughout. So it's, again, it's good to have multiple eyes on this thing. Awesome. All right. Well, thank you so much, you all. I appreciate it. All right. Well, with that, the time is eight fifty-two. I will call for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much, everybody.
Not bad for a budget night.
Not bad for a budget night at all, actually.
Thank you.